We are very proud to have our citizens here. And during this meeting, there will be no disruptions. Outburst, inappropriate language will not be permitted. An individual may be asked to leave or be removed by the Sergeant of Arms if necessary. Thank you again for being here, for your support and your continuous progress of our city. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Harris to lead us in invocation. Please, we ask that everyone stand if you are able.
All right, let us pray. My gracious heavenly Father, we come to you now as humble as we know how. Get bow before your throne of grace, thanking you simply because you are God and God alone. Father, we just honor your presence right now. We thank you, Father God, that you are here right now, that you are present and really available to bless us whatever we need. And Father, we just lift up the City Council members, the mayor, the city manager, everybody that is here, God. Father, I pray you just crown them with wisdom, that, Father, you give them knowledge, Father God, to lead this city in the way that it should go. And Lord, we pray for the citizens of this great city, God. Lord, we pray, Father God, that you would bring unity and love in this community, God. Lord, we pray that ultimately your agenda is done and not our will. We pray, Father God, that you would give discernment, God, to make the right decision that's best for the present, past and future citizens of this community, God. Lord, we pray, Father God, that, Lord, they just make decisions that are equitable, that are fair for all people, God, rich or poor. Lord, we just thank you, Father God, for a successful meeting on today. We thank you, Father God, that decisions are made to push this city forward and greater, that you maybe get the glory from it. And Father, we just acknowledge you in every decision that is made and ask that you breathe upon each person that is under the sound of my voice. Lord, we thank you for this day. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. God bless.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to our presentation items. I'll turn this over to our City Secretary, Ms. Downs.
All right, we are now going to present a proclamation recognizing the life and legacy of former council member Verna Riley, who passed away on July 10th of 2025. So the family would like to come up while Ms. Councilwoman Laura Jacobs reads the proclamation.
Whereas the city of Wilmer honors the life and legacy of Verna Riley, a dedicated public servant, community leader and cherished resident of Wilmer, Texas. And whereas Verna Riley faithfully served on the Wilmer City Council off and on from 1982 to 1996, dedicating her time and talents to improving the quality of life for all of Wilmer residents. And whereas throughout her 14 years of service, she contributed to the growth, development and success of the city, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to the public service and the betterment of her community. Whereas Verna Riley passed away on July the 10th, 2025, leaving behind a lasting legacy of service, leadership and love for the city of Wilmer. And whereas beyond her civic contributions, Verna Riley was a beloved mother, grandmother and matriarch. She survived by her daughter Cheryl, three grandchildren, four great grandchildren and two great, great grandchildren, who will carry forward her legacy of love, kindness and service. And whereas the city of Wilmer recognizes the profound impact of Verna Riley had on her family, friends and community, and wishes to honor her memory and lifetime of dedication. Now therefore I, Laura Jacobs, on behalf of Sheila Pata, Mayor of City Council and on behalf of the entire City Council of the city of Wilmer, Texas, honor the memory of Verna Riley and recognize her daughter Cheryl Riley for carrying forward her mother's legacy of love, faith and family.
We will now move on to the citizen comments. Ms. Downs, do we have anyone, individual who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Can I get Mr. Kent Alexander?
Mr. Alexander, please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Name's Kent Alexander. I live at 1202 Dewberry, Wilmer, Texas. I'd like to talk a little bit about my neighborhood and try to get it done as quick as I can because I like to get everything in. In my neighborhood, we have gunfire all the time, fireworks year round, got drug houses down the street, got speeding cars, and we don't have any police presence. We hardly ever see a police car unless you call them, then they just drive through. Got brush tree debris stacked up on all the streets, got red cars on side street in the people's yards. The brush tree stuff's not being bundled up, so it's not being picked up. I mean, and people leave out their trash containers out on the street, weekly, daily. It's all supposed to be taken back in the yard. There's not anybody doing any code enforcement. Got dogs running loose. You call down into the city to try to talk to somebody, it goes to voicemail. You leave a message, nobody ever returns your call. And it's just one thing after another. And I know that the city, these employees work for the citizens out here, and the citizens aren't getting their money for it. So just thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next, Ms. Mary Finney.
Ms. Finney, please state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes, ma'am.
Mary Finney, 332 Chandler Street, Wilmer, Texas. I called several times since January as to when shrubbery and brush that you trim out of your yard could be picked up, and I've been told the third Thursday. Well, in June, there was a small pile of stuff that the kids had trimmed off of our fence, didn't get picked up on the third Thursday. July, third Thursday, kids continued to clean off our fence and a pile grew. It's now about the size of half that table, or it was half that table in July, third Thursday. No one picked it up. Approaching the third Thursday of August, the pile is now the size of that table. I was told that the city picked up that kind of brush. The house up the street from us has had a pile out in front of their house also since early June, and it has never been picked up. I would like to know, is the third Thursday right, or are we just going to do it every three or four months? Okay? Please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Finney.
Mr. Bob Eichel?
Mr. Eichel, please state your name, your address, and you will have three minutes, sir.
Bob Eichel, City of Dallas, 9109 Clear Lake. I'm here to, I submitted a letter on behalf of the Olson family in support of Rona, and for myself personally, I'd like to-
Can you just speak a little bit? You're just kind of tall, just, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm here to speak on behalf of, I'm sorry. I'm here to speak on behalf of Rona. She has, I've known her for many years. I first met her when I was working as an architect and planner. We worked on a project in McKinney, which was very instrumental in the development of that area. Some years passed, and then I got into real estate brokerage, and she helped me and Three Corps on an industrial project, which is very helpful. And more recently, where she's been working with us and others on the Olson Track, which is about 458 acres, which is going to be another great development for, for Wilmer. She's been a very helpful person to, for us in the real estate community, so I'm here to lend her all my support. I thank highly of her.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Candy Madrigal, you're next.
Ms. Candy, please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Candy Madrigal, 205 Summer Street. I am here to speak on behalf of Rona. I mean, this is getting old. We do, y'all do this every other month. I have no faith in this council. After tonight, seriously, no faith. But Rona has been our moral compass here for many, many years. The city hasn't seen the great things that have been done without her. Wouldn't have happened. We'd still be back in 1982, which is what some of y'all want, but we can't go back there. And Rona has been an inspiration for everyone and grown so much with the city. I can't believe we keep doing this and keep doing this to her. Anyway, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Ms. Vicki Vandergriff?
Ms. Vicki, please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Alrighty. I'm Vicki Dandy-Griff. I live at 247 Dewitt Street, and I'd like to speak to y'all regarding our senior citizens group. This has become a second family for so many of us, and I can't tell you how blessed we all are. And we do have a little set aside area for us, which is due in great part to Ms. Rona over there, who had figured out how to get that built without taking money out of the budget, and we just really appreciate it. But the fact is, we have built lasting friendships. We, we are a second family to each other. We know each other's family members. We know what they're going through. We know each other's health problems. Unfortunately, several of us have been out recently due to health issues, but hopefully I'm going to be back in full steam pretty soon. And we have others that I hope certainly will return as quickly as possible. But I want to thank the city of Wilmer for this outstanding opportunity for your seniors. It is so great to be recognized and not shoved off in the corner somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Demetris Graham?
Please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Demetris Graham. I no longer have an address in Wilmer because I was evicted from the crossings. When I went to pay my rent, the manager turned it off, so I couldn't pay it at Walmart. We only have one source to pay it at, but that's, she turned it off, and I feel like it was retaliation because my daughter wouldn't buy a house. When I moved here 18 years ago, that was the going thing. It was a great deal. But if you decide not to buy a house, you can't force somebody to do anything, and the prices are just really overrated. I don't know if you can do anything about it. But they've held my house office in the Marino's front yard, and he's charging me $200 a day for storage, plus $9,000 for moving it, and you've tore my deck, you've tore up all my stuff, but I have to pay for this, and they're going to auction my home off in 30 days. Manager didn't come to work the whole week after I was served, refused to talk to me, the lawyer won't talk to me. I mean, that is what it is. If you look at the old houses in that community where those lots are, they're giving people notices to move, people are just leaving because, you know, they don't know their rights, they don't know they can appeal this, and they're just taking the people's houses. And then when they auction my house off, I get nothing. Whatever they sell it for, they keep all the proceeds. I mean, I don't know. But if you don't know, you know, but now you know. So I don't know if there's anything the city can do about that, but I plan to get an attorney and try to fight, but it's just not right. I would say no to yes. They give you referrals, they blow your phone up all day to referrals, they never honor the referral. My daughter lived there for a year. They told me to wait, wait till she buy her house, you get a bigger bonus. My referral was for her to move in and rent, and you never honored that, but you blow my phone up all day. All of them asking you to refer people, I would never, never refer anyone over there at this rate because it's not what it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We, we will now move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Downs, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Item two, consider resolution R2025-01717G-R, amending resolution number R2025-0717G to include additional language as requested by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, expressing a letter of no obligation for Torrington Wilmer LP's application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for 2025 housing tax credits and private activity bond funds for the construction of an affordable multifamily rental housing development to be located at 1501 East Beltline Road, Wilmer, Texas. Item three, consider the approval on March 2025 monthly financials. That's it.
That's all?
Mm-hmm.
No one's going to speak?
Madam Mayor, I request item number two be removed for discussion.
Okay. Do I get a second on that, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay.
We need to make a motion to approve item number one and then to pull item number two, vote number three. Sorry, yes, you're correct.
Not, not on that one.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent item agenda number three.
Okay. May I get a second?
I'll second it.
Yes?
Yes.
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 It passes five to zero.
My question on item number two has to do with the second bullet. The proposed development is located in a consensus tract, or in a census tract with more than 20% housing tax credit. What is that? What is a census tract? And is that available for other residents in that area, or what is that?
The only thing I know about this is that there were some language that apparently didn't get included in the resolution when they wanted, and this is the same people that came to us before. And so this, this language Kristen and I got with them and said, okay, well, what language wasn't in the resolution that the council passed that you needed them to pass? And they sent it to us, so we did a resolution to amend it and include it. What they're looking for is housing tax credits, so when they build these things, because it's going to be, you know, assisted living type, type situation, they get the tax credits for that. So that's what this is all about. We're not assisted living in, in that way, but I mean, affordable housing, I'm trying to, that's what I mean.
Where is this located at?
This is Torrington. It's the exact same thing that the council passed at the last meeting.
What we approved at the last council meeting? My question is, is it just for them, or is it for any new development that's in that area?
It's just for them. Each one would have to come and apply, and there's certain requirements like public hearings and things like that that you have to do. So each, each time a developer would come, they would do that for the city council, have their own public hearing, ask for their own tax credits.
So what is a census tract? Is that just because of population and that area?
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't, I'm not aware of that one.
Look it up. It doesn't, there's no term. It doesn't exist as a term. That's why I was questioning it, but it's something that the state is requiring?
I know that there are certain things like the public hearings and different, oh, you know, oh, yeah, you're back, yeah.
Come on up.
You were here, there you go.
Good afternoon, council. Yes, to answer your question, so the census tract is basically a geographic area that's determined by the federal government, and so it makes up a certain population size. And so the census tract that we're referring to, it's basically a geographic area that they use to determine how many people live in a given area. And so the census tract that this is referring to runs all the way up into Wilmer, through Wilmer, up into Hutchins, even into the city of Dallas. So it's a large geographic area, so because of that, that's what's triggering this requirement.
And so is it only for developments such as yours, or can normal citizens get it if they build a house or something?
So, so the census tract is just data collecting, and so the state is basically just saying that the city is aware that it falls within a census tract that falls under this category.
That it's a 20% tax credit?
So, so it has to do with just the number of tax credit units within that massive census tract. So we're talking like 10 plus-
Oh, 20% of the people in that area?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's reaching up into, you know, Bald Springs, Mesquite, so it's, it's a large geographic area, and so because of that, that's what's triggering this requirement.
Okay, I understand.
Okay. That I understand.
Sir, can I get your name for the record?
Yes, I'm Carston Lowe. I'm the Affordable Housing Development Manager with JPI, located at 9001 Cypress Waters Boulevard, Dallas, Texas.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? May I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to modify the previous approval letter to TDHCA to include the three bullet points mentioned in item number two.
Okay. May I get a second?
A second.
May I get a vote?
Yes.
Okay, this is just change in this ordinance resolution?
Correct.
Just modify what we're talking about.
Yes.
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 Five to zero, it passes.
Action item number four, discuss and consider approving ordinance O2025-0807A relating to a budget amendment for all funds of the city for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and residents of Wilmer. I'm here to present the end of fiscal year projections and budget amendments for fiscal year 2025, which is the current year that we are in right now. I am hoping that you have a copy of the presentation in front of you so that you can follow along. So I'm sure that you've gone through this exercise before. The purpose of budget amendments is just to align all of the end of year projections that have been provided by the staff to the finance department and just align everything to project out what we think we're going to end up with on September 30th. It is also meant to kind of clean up some other items that may have come up during the course of the year that were not present when the budget was adopted in, last year around this time. We're going to start with the general fund. And in your packet, you should have the full budget amendments for all the funds, and these will also be published on the website next Monday. Everything will be on there for the public to view, the current budget, the amended budget and the proposed budget will all be there. So there is an increase in general fund revenues due to the following major factors. Property taxes were originally budgeted at $6.1 million, but we have collected $7.3 million. So that number was adjusted. The fiscal year 2025 budget revenue, the complete general fund budget revenue was a little over $15 million. The amended revenue number is $18.9 million. And a majority of that increase, which is a 25% increase, is due to that property tax that was collected, and we're just adjusting the actuals. There's also some increase in garbage collections from $330,000 originally budgeted to $448,000 that we're projecting for the end of the fiscal year. An increase in city ambulance service charges from $18,400 budgeted to $163,000 and change. And it's really difficult to budget for that city ambulance because you don't know who's going to need an ambulance during the year. So it's good to go in and project out around this time of year what we think we're going to end up with on September 30th. Court fines and fees, they were originally budgeted at about $510,000, and now it's almost $700,000 that we're thinking it's going to come in. We've been collecting quite a bit of court fines and fees. Also, there was a 2024 debt that was issued in, I believe, the winter of 2024, and the proceeds were in the amount of $1.315 million. That was for the purchase of a fire truck. And so we need to record that as a revenue source. All of those that I just highlighted make up that 25% increase. So it's nothing that, you know, crazy that, you know, came in or anything. We're just aligning those revenues to most, to better reflect what's actually happened during this fiscal year and to record that debt. So what we do is we record the revenue for that debt, and then we record the expense where they, when they actually went out and bought those fire trucks, that comes out. So you will see that in your budget document that I included. So the next page, here's what I was referring to. So the fiscal year 2025 adopted budget was a little over $16 million, and the amended is $19 million, which is a 19% increase. And you're thinking, well, why is that so much of an increase? It's the two fire department trucks. So close to $3 million was spent in those two trucks. There were also police department capital purchases of safety equipment, $100,000, and to replacement vehicles, $84,000 and change, a part of an insurance claim. So we have to put that in there as an expenditure. So we got money in from the insurance company, and you'll see that in the revenues, and then we went and purchased those vehicles that were totaled by the insurance claim. The rest of the revisions come as part of the general course of operations and can be seen in the detailed budget amendment document, and you can see them broken down by department. And I made sure that I put in the dollar increase or decrease per department and per line item, and then a percentage change as well. So with the budget amendment- So with the budget amendment, $729,678 is added to the ending fund balance for fiscal year 25. We're going to get into fund balance discussions in a little bit. It's very important that council is well-versed in how fund balance is calculated, what does it mean, you know, how much do we have to have in reserves and so forth. So there's a little snapshot there on your next page that shows your fiscal '23 actuals, your fiscal '24 actuals. Those are audited numbers. And then you'll see your fiscal '25 adopted budget last year, an increase and a decrease or a decrease, and then your fiscal year '25 amended. If you can see that dark blue column, you'll see ending fund balance, it's negative $364 and $926, I'm sorry. We added some funds there to the fund balance, which is now positive ending fund balance of $365,000. And so with the fiscal year '25 amended, this is for general fund, the major fund of the city. The total expenditures is $16.1 million. That's net of capital purchases. So you do not include one-time purchases in calculating your fund balance, okay? Like your fire trucks, the cars, you know, things of that nature. We take that out. We want to take the actual operating expenditures for a whole year. You divide that by 365 days, and then you multiply that times 60 days. 60 days is the policy that council has for a reserve. You have to have 60 days in the bank to pay 60 days' worth of expenditures. The beginning fund balance was $667,000, starting October 1st of last year, with a deficiency of $1.9 million. So we're going to go into how do we fix that? I think a lot of it has to do with the city being behind a couple of years in the audit and not knowing really where you stood cash-wise. So after analyzing all of that, this is what came up. And when I was going through the budget amendments and figuring things out and, you know, putting together all the numbers, I saw that, and it has to be corrected for the following fiscal year. So, next slide. What caused the fund balance to decrease? Amendments and revisions were not done the past two fiscal years to align with end-of-fiscal year projections, no amendments. How can we ensure that this doesn't happen again? So you develop a strong budget, and that's the key to managing a strong fund balance. Working with the various departments to ensure a thorough spending plan is in place at the start of the new fiscal year and that they stick to it throughout the year. The fiscal year 2026 proposed budget will reestablish the required reserves as dictated by council of 60 days. Another important thing to note is that the finance director is the person who calculates the fund balance and is supposed to be calculating cash flow on a month-to-month basis and will inform and educate council on what needs to be done as far as tax rates and setting those rates so that this doesn't happen on a year-to-year basis. So the next page, your fund balance last five fiscal years. Since fiscal year 2021, only one year the city had more than 60 days in reserves. Every other year, you did not meet that reserve. Now, best practice is to have 90 days in fund balance. 25% should be put away. You have 60 days, so we're starting, you know, we're going to get to the 90 days. With careful planning, we can change that reserve policy to 90 days. There's a couple of other things that I will bring up to council in the future on how we can better align our finances and policies and procedures, you know, fixed assets and capitalization thresholds and all of that. So, a little concerning, but like I said, this will be rectified with the coming budget. Any questions so far on the general fund? Next page is water and sewer fund. I want to make sure that council is very informed of how the water and sewer fund looks. I've done a cash flow analysis on the water and sewer fund. It looks pretty good right now. However, the costs are going up substantially every year for water and sewer and other debt that that fund has, and it's not sustainable. As the debt goes up, the water and sewer revenues are kind of flat. So the water and sewer fund mainly has revisions and items that were not budgeted, and these are the TRA cost reimbursement, which is $285,282, grant revenue of $196,302. That was a really good grant that the city administrator applied for and got for your AMI meters, so that helped to pay for that. And your interest income, which was $16,795 is what I'm estimating. Other revisions, as shown in the detailed budget document, there's a 9% change from the adopted to the amended with that $358,000 increase, just aligning things to, you know, take us to the end of the year. Not a whole lot of change. The expenses include revisions in the following. The TRA buy-in cost of $274,000, it's offset by revenues. Increase in water purchase cost by $31,000, and other revisions as shown in the detailed budget document. There's about a 10% increase from the original adopted budget to the amended, and that's just to align us with end-of-year projections in these expenses. The water and sewer fund is an enterprise fund, and thus its financials are reported differently than the governmental funds the city has. Therefore, ending fund balance is reported as ending cash and investments. Generally, having a 90-day reserve is favorable in an enterprise fund, and the city is having the 90-day reserve. So right there, you have your beginning cash and investments. I calculated fiscal '23, '24, and '25. Ending cash and investments for fiscal year '25 are estimated at about $1.7 million. Your 90-day reserve amount is $935,381. You have well over the reserve right there. And of course, fiscal year '25 is an estimated number. Any questions for the water and sewer fund?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? In our last meeting, we had the auditor here, and he talked about the city was in good financial standing, but there were some issues with the water department, that there was some predictions there. I can't remember the exact verbiage, somebody may be able to recall. So, but this seems to be the opposite of what the auditor said.
There, I'm not sure what you're referring to, and this is for fiscal year '25, though.
Well, he was just, he was talking about, okay.
It was '24, but the previous.
So that was in '24?
Yes.
Okay, so he was recommending an increase, but by this, we wouldn't really have to have it.
Well, no. He is recommending an increase because he is looking into the future. And when we bring up fiscal year '26 discussions, you will see that, okay, this looks good right now for this year, but then we have to calculate next year. You'll see in the proposed budget how much of an increase in the expenses are in the water and sewer fund. It has its own debt that it has to pay. It goes up every year, the TRA debt. That buy-in is completely different. This is debt service that we have to pay. And I was shocked when I saw that letter from the TRA telling us how much we have to pay next year, and I thought, oh, I'm going to have to change that number now. But you'll see that when the fiscal year '26 is presented, so it is recommended that you do increase rates in the future so that you can keep up with that, because from what I've seen, that TRA ONM debt service is going to keep increasing because it's based on their budget and their costs. So we have to pay a portion of that. So...
Is it as much as the buy-in cost?
It's more.
Ooh, okay.
I think for next year, I saw the payment of about $480,000 or something like that. And then the buy-in cost is a different cost. They break it down. They put it all per city or whoever is involved in that agreement. They have your, you know, their ONM, they have the TRA buy-in, they have blah, blah, blah. And then they give you a total, you know, $780,000 or whatever. And then we break it down in our budget so that we can keep track of those costs from year to year.
If I could also add, there's a customer that is building infrastructure that will tap into that, which is that large building we see on Beltline. So we have not started collecting water and sewer from them as of yet. And so that should balance that out, and in fact, that customer reimbursed us for two payments because they were the first ones to tap into the line. So they are, it's the MUD district, and they are buying into it. They will be paying that bill. We are absorbing the increase.
But they're paying at one and a half the cost, right?
They are, because they're in the ET jack. But we are, any, so TRA, DWU, City of Lancaster, we are absorbing, they go up every year. They do a cost study, and they go up every year based on infrastructure, any debt that they have. We have not, not known enough in at least five years since.
Every city has this problem, by the way. Every city has this problem where it's very expensive to purchase the water and then also to treat it, and then kind of balancing that out with not wanting to raise the rates, the water rates. I live in Salina, the water rates are really high, really high. So, you know, that's something to consider. Any other questions or discussion with the water and sewer fund? Okay, we will move on to Wilmer Economic Development Corporation and the Community Development Corporation. We'll start with the EDC, and on that page, you will see their revenues and expenditures. On one side, you'll have the revenues, and it was $2.45 million in sales taxes that were estimated to be collected during this fiscal year. The amended number is $3.02 million, a 23% increase just based on actual collections and estimates to the end of the year. Interest income of $58,000. And for expenditures, there's a minus 16%, a decrease of 16%. Started off with about $2.1 million adopted budget, and the amended is $1.8 million. Expenditure revisions are capital costs increased by $343,000, but there was decreased costs in marketing studies and other expenses that were just operational that just came in a lot lower. And so there was a 16% decrease in that. Fund balances for the EDC are favorable, as seen in the detailed budget document. Wilmer CDC, revenues and expenditures, the budget also, $2.45 million, because they both collect the same percentage for the sales tax, 80% increase in the revenues for CDC. And those revisions are sales tax to align with projections of $2.962183, interest income of about $50,000, and there's grant revenue from Texton of about $1.4 million that we recorded, and we are now having to adjust that revenue because it has come in, and also some estimates of, for the green ribbon grant. Expenditures, 15% increase, several operational decreases due to decreased costs or no activity, capital cost increase of $252,816, and a reimbursable grant cost of $797,000. That's the green ribbon. So it kind of balances out. The fund balances are favorable, and I have detailed all of that in the budget document.
So are we finished with the green ribbon?
I...
Not yet. We are in the closeout process. They're working with our engineer to get gas builds, and so we're looking in the next 30 to 60 days to fully close it out.
Okay. So we had approximately an increase of $600,000 more expenditures, and so would all $600,000, was that probably the green ribbon? And so we have about $1,000 or $2,000, $100,000 rather, or $200,000 remaining in the green ribbon?
So a portion of it was for the highway, and then there was savings. We had an allocation, which is probably the Beltline portion of it. So that would have come directly to the city, and that was not reimbursable. Y'all budgeted that as part of that project.
Our city events budget, I know, was over a lot. Is that going to be rectified moving forward into the next budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Next are your capital projects. This capital projects fund did not have a budget for fiscal year 2025. And capital projects are mainly financed through debt issuance. The CIP projects listed here were financed with debt. You see the fiscal year '23 actuals. Revenues, increase of $1.25 million, and that's mostly an interest that is being earned from the restricted bank accounts where the bonds are housed. And then for the expenditures, I have created a capital tracking system, so all of the projects now have project numbers so that when invoices and pay apps come in, they're all coded with this specific project number, and they're put into the software with that same project number so that I can just run reports like that. And everything is there: construction, design, miscellaneous furniture, so that when at the end of the construction period, when that project is accepted by the city and it is done, we can move it from construction in progress to an asset, and now we know exactly how much that building costs all in. Okay? So FAO3 is the new police station. So you'll see there the actuals for the past couple of years, and then the amended is $19.03 million for the police station that I have estimated based on pay apps that we've already paid and then, you know, the construction that's right now, and the pay apps that I think are going to be coming in to 9:30. And then FAO2 is the new Public Works Building. About $8 million is left on that one. That's basically your projects that are going on right now. You see a bunch of other projects there from previous years and how much they've cost. So I'm proposing an increase of about $27.3 million just to align with those invoices that have come in and will be coming in. So the amended budget for the expenditures are $27,348,892. So as you see, the fund balance that we started off is a $29.3 million. And you see the yellow, which is negative, that's what we're using up. And then at the end of fiscal year '25, we'll have about $1.5 million left in the bank. Okay? Now, that's if nothing else crazy comes in, where we have to pay something, right? But that's what I am projecting. It's very important to budget for your capital projects. Next is your TIF fund and the seizure fund. TIF fund did not have any budget for fiscal year '25. I'm increasing that to $500,000 because we're going to start transferring property taxes that belong in the TIF, and $500,000 is what I plan to transfer into the TIF by 9:30. Some developer might ask for reimbursement, so we want to have some money in there set aside, and that belongs... So we want to have some money in there set aside and that belongs to the TIF. I did not put any expenditures like payments to developers because we don't know yet. We don't know how much it's going to be and so forth, so. I did the same for next year, another five hundred thousand so that we have a million dollars in there. And then we'll adjust it as, as we need. And then going forward after that, we'll start moving in money according to the actual values that are in the TIF. We're working with the consultant right now to make sure that everything's lining up the, the way it's supposed to. So that one's fairly simple. The police seizure fund, that's also fairly simple. I mean, they started off with twelve thousand eight hundred that they thought they were going to receive. And they actually received a little under two thousand dollars. And it's, it's, it's difficult to predict what they're going to be, you know, some kind of crime. And they're going to seize something. So, you know, we left it at eighteen eighty-one, which is the actual. And then some expenses that they purchased some items for thirty-five hundred dollars. And so it just lowers the fund balance a little bit by sixteen hundred and nineteen dollars. Not, not too bad. That, that's a small fund. Next page is the court technology fund and court security fund, which by the way are going away because the legislature came up, the governor came up with a new law where they want those two funds combined going forward. So in the future, we're going to come back and budget for something called consolidated court fund, which will have everything in there. For now, these have their own budgets. And that, those funds that are in those bank accounts are restricted still. And they don't get spent on anything else. You know, everything for court security gets spent out of that. Everything for court technology gets spent out of that until that whole bank account is depleted, you know, with, with purchases. Just wanted to let you know. And so for the court technology fund, they had a total revenue of twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars budgeted. I increased it by seventy-four hundred dollars to allow for the interest income that they have been collecting in those bank accounts. And then court technology fund expenses, it stayed the same. That's all they spent, adding another seventy-four hundred to the fund balance in interest. Court security fund, same thing, interest income. I just added nine thousand dollars to their revenue. And then for court security fund expenses, they had budgeted thirteen thousand two fifty. It turns out that they're have, they haven't spent a lot and it's twelve hundred dollars. So they're going to put back another twenty-one thousand fifty into their fund balance. Next is the debt service fund. This is your INS fund. This is where the property taxes that are collected, that are only to pay off debt, go. So this debt service fund for fiscal year twenty-five, the adopted budget was three point two million dollars. I reduced it to three point oh two two to match what we have received from the tax office, you know, the actual taxes received. And then for the expenditures, there was budgeted two point oh six two million for debt service. I increased it to three hundred and ninety thousand two ninety-six also to match what we're actually paying from our debt service schedule. And so the complete, you know, revenue is over, under expenditures. It's about five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that we're increasing and adding to the ending, the end of the year. So the ending fund balance will be a little less, one point four eight three million. And that's just to account for the debt service and the actials, what we're actually paying them. So on this page, you can see the combined budget summary of all funds so that you can just see at a glance all the different funds that we budget for. The type of fund that it is, your beginning fund balance, those were audited numbers. Your total revenues, expenditures, any transfers in and out between the funds. And then your estimated fund balance for all funds.
Can I ask a question to go back on the debt service fund? So you said to, to match the tax receipts that were received. So our INS tax receipts are less than what we had projected? Or is there some, I know you're always going to be behind a little bit, but most people will pay their taxes within the first three months of the year.
Tax collections are already at a hundred percent. So we collected everything.
So why are we in the negative?
What do you mean, why are we in the negative?
Well, you, you just said that you lowered the debt payment or the debt amount. It went from three million two to three million as amended.
Because the fiscal year twenty-five adopted budget over, over budgeted.
Overestimated what you could get in taxes?
Yes, three point one five million.
How is that possible? I'm sorry, INS is matched up with the, the appraised value of the districts, or, or appraised value of the city? I'm sorry.
I can help. So when we refunded, we had excess debt of about two hundred thousand or so. And so we, we tend to, we don't know what to do with that. We're trying to figure out based on our truth and taxation. So it's not that it was overcollected. It was that that was the amount at the time and then we refund and that the amount goes down. We collected what we estimated that to be.
Well, it was not overcollected, it was undercollected what we projected. It was undercollected. So if we projected three, three point two million and we only collected three million, so we were short two hundred thousand in our projections?
No, we are two hundred dollars. We got the excess debt sheet, which you all know.
Look on this last page. It says our adopted budget was three million two oh four and our amended is three oh eleven. So we're taking off two hundred thousand dollars.
So that's, remember the budget is a planning document. What I'm talking about is what actually.
I understand, but INS is, that's kind of.
Right.
You should be able to calculate how much INS.
We don't calculate it, it's calculated by the tax assessor.
Okay, what were you saying about a refund? What's refunded?
So when we had the refund a couple of years ago, we ended up having two hundred thousand in excess debt.
And also you have to take into consideration that there are properties that are under ARB. And so at the beginning of the year, you can say, oh, we're going to collect this much. But then there's lawsuits and people that go protest. And the tax office even, actually, what was it, a couple of months ago? We had to send them back a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars or so because they won the lawsuit. So the city has to pay back that money. So it's, it's, you know, you, you have to guess. You can think, you know, oh, the INS fund is this and here's your certified values. And then you multiply that and this is what we're going to receive and we're hoping we will. But there's lawsuits and people protesting and we don't know that. Like right now, we're, we're planning on collecting a certain amount for next fiscal year. That might not be true. Because if there are people protesting right now, and they tell us this when we're calculating all of our things and budgeting and so forth, they tell us, make sure that you give yourselves a little wiggle room because you don't know which way it's going to go. You might end up paying. And in fact, we did. And this, this takes it into consideration, by the way. I should have mentioned that. But I think I calculated this before we actually paid that back.
See, I, I'm just in my mind, I'm thinking M and O is flexible, but I would think INS is, this is what it is.
If somebody is contesting their tax value and their taxes, it's both. They come back and tell us, hey, City of Wilmer, you owe us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because we need to pay these people the taxes that we collected and here's your breakdown, M and O, INS. Send us an ACH payment.
Thank you.
So, yeah. So this is why the, the end of year projections and the amendments are necessary because you want to align that to what truly happened. But that's a good question, yeah. Because you would think, hey, you know, this times this equals this and you'd get that money. Sometimes you don't. Okay. Oh, that was it. So that was the, all, all the summary funds are there. And so thank you so much for your attention and your good questions and your participation. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
The total amendment of that you're projecting is how much?
It's in the agenda item. Let me, I don't have it with me. I know that I, I prepared that and on the agenda item, I broke it down. My total revenue.
Or just the general, general fund revenue? Is this the?
The general fund?
Yes.
Okay, I would have to, let me pull up the.
I can, I can read it. So for general funds, they adopted was eighteen million.
Okay.
Twenty-five percent increase.
So the property taxes for general fund were higher than what we projected?
Yes.
But INS was less than we projected? Make that make sense to me. How, how is that possible? You know, if you're both, if you're doing it both on percentages of the amount of the appraised value of a property, you know, I have a master's degree in mathematics and that seems to be contradictory to me.
I, I, I did not prepare the adopted budget.
I understand, I understand. It's from county, but.
And so my guess is that the correct tax rate wasn't used or maybe they, instead of a hundred percent or ninety-eight percent of the certified values, they use maybe a ninety percent or a, you know, to give themselves some wiggle room there. That's what I've seen happen.
Base the budget on a certain percent of the appraised value.
Yeah, yeah. So that in case they don't collect it, some cities do that. They, they say, you know, let's base our revenues on ninety percent collections because you never know.
But an increase of three million, that's a whale, I would think. It's a twenty, it's twenty-five percent.
No, for, for the property taxes, budgeted was six point one, collected seven point three. So that is not three million.
Well, what else is in the general fund?
Well, it, it's in your packet. It is the garbage collections.
Wouldn't that be in waste?
Increase in city ambulance services. They adopted eighteen thousand four hundred and it's a hundred and sixty-three thousand. Court fines and fees. And then your 2024 debt. That's revenue. That's one point three million dollars. So there's your twenty-five percent.
Is that interest off of the bond?
Is what?
Is that interest off of the bond?
No. When you borrow that money and the money comes into the city, you have to book it as revenue. Because you show it coming in and then you show it coming out. Otherwise, how are you paying for those fire trucks? It would be a big negative at the bottom, you know, because you're not showing your revenue coming in from that debt. And now you're paying almost three million dollars in, in those two fire trucks. So then it's going to look really bad. So you have to show it coming in and then you have to show it coming out. And a portion of that, so the 2024 debt paid for one truck, but you bought two. So you had some money in the 2022 series certificate of obligation. And so I moved that money in there to cover that so that it is a wash, okay? But when you're doing a budget amendment, you have to show the revenues and the change, decrease, increase. And then you, you, you show the expenditures and the same, what changed there? Then you can take the net of both of them and in your budget packet, you'll see it there in yellow. What is the net at the very bottom of general fund? You'll see it in yellow. How much did it, is the total increase or how much is the total decrease? And let me tell you, I can pull it up.
No, I don't want to argue with you, but I know that for four years, we were planning that purchase of those trucks. And so they were kind of saving and setting off funds to the side for four years to purchase those. So anyway.
Yes, so because you had those in savings.
So that would have been in, like in the fund balance part of previous years.
You have to move it into the general fund. I have to show the movement of the money so that it doesn't look like, hey, where are they getting the two point nine million to buy those fire trucks? Now they can see it at the top where it's revenue. I show 2024 bond, one point three, transfers in from your savings, one point six or however that much it was. Two point nine million up revenue, two point, two point nine million up expenditure. It's a wash. And let's see if I can find that. Budget amendment, here we go. General fund. Nope, went too far.
Sorry. One final question. I'm sorry, I seem to be asking all of them. I don't want to talk over y'all, but you made the comment that waste, trash and waste was in general fund. Is that not included in the water?
No. Garbage collections are our general fund revenue.
So when people pay their water bill, they pay their trash through their water fund. I would think that that would be under the water fund if that's deposited there. So they, they do a.
We do a transfer. Yes.
So every week, all the money that's brought in in the water department for trash, it gets transferred over?
Yes, because it's. Yeah, because it's not a water and sewer fund revenue source. Garbage, trash, recycling, all of that drainage. Every city has this. You collect it under the water and sewer under that bill. And then that's broken down on your GL. And then we know that that, whatever, sixty-five thousand dollars for this month belongs over here in the general fund, transfer in. And it all happens behind the scenes, you know, the bank account from one to the other. It moves over to the general fund. Yep. So in answer to your question, the total increase for the general fund is seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-five adopted to amended. And that's seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand six seventy-eight more in revenues, okay? So we're not spending more, we're bringing in more. That is your net. So that was a good question. And I put it in yellow so that, you know, people can see that later on on the website or whatever. And if they have questions about it, they can see it. I was like, how do I want, I, I'm, I'm a math person too, so.
The main part was the, the money that was saved, the debt for the car truck.
Yes, the debt and the transfers in.
You might as well say eight hundred thousand, the eight hundred thousand that was extra plus what the savings that we had had. That, that together, they added up to the three million.
Yes.
Ms. Linda has a question.
And it looks kind of scary at first, like three million dollars, wow, we're bringing all that money. No, we had it in the savings and then we borrowed the rest. But we have to show it. And come, come audit, they're going to question me about that. Why didn't you budget for that?
Okay, I do have a question. When you're saying it was in savings and you transferred it to general fund and then you're calling it revenue. It was revenue when you got it and put it in savings.
It was not booked as revenue. When you.
So we have savings that was never reported?
That, it's not, it's not savings, it's debt. You had debt. That, it's not, it's not savings, it's debt. You had debt that you issued in the past that was set aside. And now we're using it for this.
It was debt that was taken and then it was invested.
Yes.
And...
And it's in the capital projects fund balance. So when you transfer it into general fund, now it's revenue over here, and it's a transfer out from there. And you'll, you'll see it if you, if you page up or, or switch pages or whatever, um, to your capital projects. You'll see that transfer out, one point six million. There's your money for your truck. So we want to be transparent. I want to show everything. Here's where we got the money. And, and your, and your budget summary page, you'll see it too. You'll see the money coming in and then you'll see it in parentheses going out. And all the transfers wash out to zero. They're just moving money back and forth.
I would much rather refer to it as a transfer than revenue.
Transfers in are kind of like revenue, and you have to show it that way. Now, at the end of the year, the auditor will move that over to the bottom of the, um, statement of net position and all of that. They'll move it down to transfers in, okay? But for budgeting purposes, it's kind of, it's kind of confusing for people. The audit is financials and it's a different way to, um, present the financial status of the city because that's actually what happened. And the budget is just a planning document where we're saying, you know, we think we're going to spend this money. And maybe we won't. Maybe it comes out as more. So that's why we have to amend it. And at the end of the year, the auditor will come in, and if you look at your audit and flip to the back, it'll say, general fund, originally budgeted and has numbers. Final budgeted and it has numbers, which will be this amendment. Actual, and it has numbers. And then it will show variance. How did you come out ahead? Did you come out under? So it's a good, it's a good thing to have that, huh?
Shouldn't they match?
Not really.
And expenditures, shouldn't they match? If you've done amendments to get all your line codes the same.
But you're estimating. I don't know what's going to happen this month or the next month. I'm estimating how much in invoices we're going to bring in. We don't know. We kind of know. Like, we, we know how much we're going to spend in, like Verizon, you know, the electric bill. We don't know.
So will we not do another budget amendment to make sure they match before the audit?
You can. Some cities are very, you know, particular about that, and they go at the end of the year and they do another one. You're still not going to match. Because when the audit comes in and they do their thing and they're like, no, this belongs in another year, no, this belongs in this year. And they do all their adjustments, there's still a variance. So you can never match it. It, it, it's impossible because you don't know what's, they're just projections. You don't know what's going to happen. Like fuel, we don't know how much gasoline they're going to go buy. I can kind of estimate from last year and what is trending right now, you know, what, how are the bills coming in for WEX? Um, and I can estimate, you know, how much they're spending, but I don't know for sure. And if we say, well, let's amend it again, you know? And then they go and they put gas on September thirtieth. That bill doesn't come in until October, it won't match. Because we already amended the budget, but the bill's not here yet. And so what the auditors do is they look at the bill date and they look at all the transactions, September, September, oh, here's October, okay. This right here goes to next year. But this right here is last year. So they tell us, you know, go ahead and book this to last year, blah, blah, blah. I try to do that on my own to kind of get ahead of it, and so we don't have a lot of adjusting entries. And, um, so I advise my staff, you know, hey, when the bills come in, put two folders, right? This year and the next year. Let's start, you know, accruing stuff. And so that, I mean, I could be here all day telling you all about accounting. But yeah, it's never going to match. And it's okay, you know? All the people that read the, the budget and, um, are, not the budget, the financials and analyze them, rating agencies, financial advisors, whoever, they know that this is the standard thing. That no city or entity is ever going to be like, right on the money. Sometimes they are. Like, for instance, that 2024 debt. It'll say, original, zero. Amended, thirteen fifteen. Actual, thirteen fifteen. Yay, variance zero. So we got that one. But, um, the other ones is just, it's just impossible to get those. Same thing with personnel. How do you know if someone's going to quit? And now I'm thinking, oh, this, you know, I don't know, um, city secretary or whatever. Um, I'm calculating out her pay to September thirtieth, but she leaves on Septem, on August twentieth or whatever. Now there's money there. You know, nobody's collecting that paycheck. So all the money there plus the benefits and stuff, it's a variance because we didn't pay it. So it's full of nuances and, you know, things like that, but it's good to be educated about this, and I, I love to educate people about how, how things work in, in government finance, that it's not that simple. That people think, oh, they're just cutting checks. No, we're not just cutting checks. It's very, it's a very detailed, very difficult job to be a finance director. As a former finance director in my past life, when I actually had a full-time job, it, it's a lot of work. It's a big responsibility to be the, um, person who controls and makes sure that those taxpayer funds are, you know, spend, spent correctly. And, um, and you know, and, and it's something that I just, I took pride in doing for all those years to make sure that, you know, you can't buy that. That's a grant, you know, you can't purchase that. Saying no to people, um, a lot. So, you know, because that's, that's the taxpayers' money. And it's my job to make sure that it doesn't get spent frivolously, so.
Ms. Phillips has a question.
Okay, I'm back to what is the total of these amendments? We've got all these figures and stuff, but on, um, is this it for each department?
So each fund has the...
I mean, um...
Each fund has their own total. So when you go to the end on page thirteen of general fund, you'll see it in yellow. That's the increase. We are, um, revenues over expenditures, which means we are increasing the revenue total by seven twenty-nine six seventy-eight. So we're not spending more, we're getting more. So that's for general fund. Then when you go to the water and sewer fund, you can see the same thing, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars increase in net income for that fund. Each fund has their own. What's the next one? Uh, CDC has their own budget. And in yellow, you will see one point five eight nine seven four eight is the increase in revenues. So we're not, so far, general fund, water, sewer, and CDC, we're not increasing expenses, okay? We're increasing revenues. That's the net. Okay, they're increasing their income. So when you go to EDC, nine hundred and eleven thousand five seventy-four is what we're increasing as income. And then the little funds, court technology, court security. So court technology is increasing seventy-four hundred dollars. That's their interest. Security fund, twenty-one thousand. The only one, the only one that is increasing their spending is your capital projects fund, which is almost twenty-eight million dollars. That has basically been paid already.
Would you, um, look at this page? Is this a summary of all the things that you're talking about now?
Yes, I broke it down there, went from the original budget to the amended budget and then your difference.
So if I'm reading this correctly, we have a thirty-one percent increase in revenue. But we have a hundred and nineteen percent increase in spending?
That's your capital projects fund, your twenty-seven million dollars, um, that I am increasing to pay for the public works and police station.
Okay, so if you took that out, we'd still be over, right?
If you took that out, then you're not, you're not going to have that twenty-some million dollars in expenditures increase, no. That's what's skewing that percentage number.
Just a twenty million increase?
Just a what, I'm sorry?
You said just a twenty million dollar increase.
Twenty-seven million dollars increase in expenditures, uh, for the capital projects fund. If you take that out, then you don't have that, you know, number. I can't remember what it's, eleven hundred or sixteen hundred percent increase. It, it takes that into account. You have to account for that, um, increase.
But that's going to be paid over thirteen years, right? Isn't that what we voted on? To pay for that? So why is it going all into this year's?
No, when, the buildings are being built now. So the payouts are coming in every month. So you pay for it as it comes. They're not going to wait thirteen years. No, the thirty, the thirty years or whatever is your debt. So you borrowed fifteen point nine million in 2022.
That's what I was trying to talk about.
Ten million in 2020. And so your, that's, those are your quote loans that you have out there. You pay for that out of your debt service fund from your property taxes. This capital projects fund tracks every expense that comes in for those two buildings. So we know how much we're spending on those buildings. And they're almost done. So the bills are coming in.
So let's say next year and the year after, how do we account for that debt? Would that...
Uh, in your debt service fund. Your debt service fund.
Okay, so the debt service would be increased, but the payout may not be as much?
Oh, well, if it's, if it's complete, there's no more invoices. That the project is done, we close it out, the next capital projects, uh, fund, um, budget that I bring in, if there's nothing new, it'll be zero.
But the debt income would still be coming in? And that would pay for what we're paying now? I'm just thinking, if you go out and you finance something to pay over, I thought it was thirteen years, I mean, years, thirty years? I, I don't remember, but anyway, so how do you? We're, we're, I understand you pay for it all at once because you're taking possession of the building. But how do you account for that payment in future years?
From your property taxes. So INS tax.
So that when it comes into the budget in the future years, it'll be in a debt service?
Yes.
Revenue?
No. It's not revenue because it's a loan. Remember, bonds are loans, okay? You're taking out this huge loan and we record it in the debt service fund that year, only that year. Fifteen point nine million dollars, 2022. Bam, it hits the bank. That's quote revenue, okay? And then, on the other side, the expenditures, now we have that 2022 debt series. And it's fifteen point nine million plus interest. So you'll see it break, breaking down on your debt service budget, 2022, and it'll say principal and the payment for that year. Twenty-two interest and the payment for that year. And in the budget document that I will publish on Monday, you will see all the debt. It's a big list of all the debt that the city has, how much it's outstanding, how much are we going to pay, how much we have paid in the past. And so the debt service schedule is just like your little booklet when you go get a car, a car loan, right? Take your car right now and that money that you got, it, it's not yours, you know, so it's not revenue. You just turn around and give it back to Ford. But your, that debt is yours. You already have your car. And every year, you pay a certain amount in principal and interest until that debt is, you know, satisfied. So the same thing with, um, certificates of obligation, tax notes, PPFCO. All of that is the same thing, so you would not count it as revenue again in the future. Now it's just debt.
Okay, so right now, we're, we're carrying that under other funds. We won't have that in future years. It would all be paid under that debt service fund? And it won't be that twenty-seven million?
No.
It'll be about two, two and a half million?
Yeah, this twenty-seven million is your actual cost for building those two buildings, okay? All in.
So it's one, one time, one time only that we show it?
Once this project is done and the city signs off on it, that everything looks good, it's complete, they tell me. I record it as complete.
So this is just like a loan document that you've signed for our house?
And, and we have to show that the city budgeted for this because you didn't last year. And you're spending twenty-seven million dollars, and whoever comes back to look at the budget, they go, wait a minute. How come the city didn't budget for this? This is a huge project. And so what, what, how are they paying for this or what's the deal, you know?
How did they pass the audit in '24 then if we didn't budget for it?
Because it wasn't that much. If you see the actuals there, fiscal year 2023 and 2024, and it's not, it's called construction in progress.
But the police station's been there.
But the what?
I mean, okay. So it just got in, they just moved this year? This one, this is...
The good majority of the construction happened this year.
Okay.
We had a last year, but not a, not an actual.
Okay. I'm just thinking of the rip and cutting and all that, or I mean, the, the groundbreaking and all that was last year. So we're carrying over, we're carrying over the, the development of both of the buildings in this year.
It, it's a multi-year project. So every time invoices come in, you record it in that year, okay? And then next year, again, you record it in that year. And this year, it's really heavy. The construction of it is going on strong. So every month, they send in a huge one hundred and some page invoice. Lots of stuff that they're doing. Somebody checks it. Thank goodness that Rona hired somebody that checks it, that knows what to check for. And then they approve it, and then they bring it in, and then Rona approves it, and then I approve it, and then we cut them the check. Okay? And so that's why it's important to, um, put it in your budget to show for the future, you might want to go back and say, how much did we spend that year, you know, for this, these two buildings? There it is, twenty-some million dollars. And then when the audit comes in, you can go and compare. Hey, it actually came in a little lower. Why? Well, because it, now it's another year, so those invoices may carry another, you know what I mean? Maybe they're not done. And so this is just an estimate based on how fast I see that they're billing us. And what I see, they always put, uh, balance to complete project and they put a number. I take that number. And I take it into consideration when I do all these calculations. So it's not that we're, um, budgeting to spend another twenty-seven million. We already spent it. This is just aligning everything so that it, it fits and matches as close as possible. What we have paid and the estimates that I think will happen in the next two months.
I have another question about this summary. If we, I understand that we need to consider the capital improvements. It's a horse of a different color.
Yes.
Okay, but just everyday operating expenses. We spend hours and hours and hours compiling this budget. And you're right, you never can hit the target. But you do your best guess.
That's right.
And so we come in with thirty-one per... And so, we come in with thirty-one percent extra revenue than we thought we'd get. But taking out your capital improvement line, we're still, what, fifty, sixty percent over the budget?
And, but?
Who is, I wanna know who in the city, in the departments? Are the department heads accountable for when they go over the budget?
Oh, yes.
For a reason?
Yes.
It seems to me if, if the budget is so important, we need to stay within it.
Yes.
And it's, it seems to me that year after year after year, we go over, go over, go over. You know, I don't know how y'all handle your money, but when I budget something, I try my best to stay within it. And it just seems like that this is the whole trend. We'll just, yeah, let's get it, let's spend it and we'll just amend it. I'm, I'm kind of ready to just say, no, we'll wait till we have the money and then we'll get it.
Well, that's what happened this year. The, the huge percentage that it looks like we're increasing, it's the fire trucks, which you all approved, after the budget was passed. And the twenty-twenty-four debt was also passed and approved by council after this fiscal year twenty-five adopted budget passed. So now, because those things were approved, you have to amend it to make it all aligned.
Can you explain to me why buying a fire truck would make the water and sewer fund ten percent over?
The water and sewer fund?
Would you explain to me by, why buying a fire truck would make the general fund nineteen percent over?
Well, it's in the general fund, the fire trucks come out of the general fund, 'cause fire is in there. Now for the water?
But you just told me they were down here under other, under debt service. That can't be both.
No.
Interest is an expense, but you can't put your liability there.
No, no, no.
I'm just advocating that we need to make our budget and stick to it.
I, I agree, and, and we do have those processes in place.
Obviously not.
The reason that these are so high is because of the fire trucks that were purchased. And they were approved by council after the budget passed. And so now we have to show it, an amendment, to align those numbers. So it's not that they're not being held accountable for their expenses. In fact, many departments are coming in lower than the original budget.
One of these says that.
But as far as your comment of them being held accountable, they are. Every time an invoice comes through, it has to be reviewed, or a purchase order. And they are asked, how are you going to pay for this? Was this budgeted, was this not budgeted? Where did you budget it?
If it's not, let's just amend it.
No. If it's not, it has to come to council for your approval, that's how it is in every city. And then they go and purchase it.
Excuse me, but I have been told more than one time that any time there's an expenditure over the budget within fifty thousand dollars, all she has to do is say, yeah, that's okay. Now we can't be both ways.
No, you can't, but the city administrator?
Did you hear that from me? Because that's, that's not what I?
I heard it from council and Steel when he sat right here and you were sitting right there. That we had a fifty thousand dollar margin, that if we went over the budget, all you had to do was say?
It was just an expense item, not a budget, you know?
So, if, if I could clarify that. There is a purchasing policy that the council approves that follows state law that allows me fifty thousand in expenditures. That is not my answer for someone who goes over their budget. So I want?
All these budgets are over.
I wanna go back, because I think I understand what you're asking. And I think you're talking about something different. So what that might be in general fund, and I'm just looking at the three-eighty agreements. So we budgeted. So our actuals were twenty-three, three point one million. Twenty-four, it was two point six million. We adopted the budget of two million for twenty-five. And it came out a million one. When we get sales taxes, so there is a standing ten-year agreement that we go back and we do a look back on. And we say, okay, we think it's gonna come in here, but if you recall in our CDC meeting, and you asked about sales taxes, and sales taxes are cyclical. And so depending on how much we collect is how much we pay out on that agreement based on a past council ten-year incentive agreement. We paid a million dollars over that, which made the budget have to be amended to the three point oh one eight. So that, those are things that we can't predict, but that, I, I just wanted to give an example. What I can do is go back for what those increases are and make, and clarify what they are, name them, why tho, that those particular items went over in the budget. So it's not that we are frivolously, we, this, we, this is my one big thing as city administrator, that I'm accountable to council for. And so, we hold the directors accountable. And most of those budgets are under budget, but the stuff we can't predict, because again, this is a planning document. It is something that the comptroller requires us to do, that state law requires us to do. And it's part of the process for setting a tax rate. So this is not something we frivolously do. I can't speak to, I, I can't even remember what that conversation is. But the fifty thousand is a purchasing limit, which is different from the budget. So I apologize if that was your impression on, you know, that I, I could just?
So maybe it is a purchasing limit, but?
Yes, ma'am.
It still doesn't explain away?
Yes, ma'am.
The rest of the overage?
Yes, ma'am. So what she's doing is making the adjustment in the amendment, because we underestimated the budget. Something different happened. And so, I can go through line by line, we'll go through line by line this week. And we'll, we'll provide that to council to show you what, what caused the increase. That, we'll do that. We'll, we'll make sure that that's clear. You're welcome.
I have a question. Five years, five and a half years. I've always requested monthly financials. It's in the bylaws, the codes, that the council shall be furnished monthly financials where they can follow the flow of the money monthly. Never once have I got them monthly. And it goes to all the council, not just me. Each council person's supposed to be furnished, whether they look at it or not, but they're supposed to be furnished that. And I get three months, maybe six months, all this stuff planned together. The day of council meeting thrown here in front of me and, you know, then wanting to vote on it. And, yeah, I'm upset about it, very upset about it. 'Cause it's gone on forever and ever and no attempt to make a change.
I, I, I have to, I have to say something, I have presented monthly financials. And they're also posted on the website. So you have your March, since I've been here, April, May, and I'm working on June.
Okay, yeah, this is, well, yeah, they're, they've just now started posting it on there. But last I saw was May, you know, so it's still?
I presented April last time I was here.
Do what?
I presented April and May, both.
And July, council?
Yes, and before that, I did March. So I am presenting them every month.
You're always gonna be a month behind at least.
I'm sorry?
You're, you're always gonna be a month behind, because it feels like we're gonna be?
Oh, of course, I mean, we have not even, I, I'm, I'm barely closing out June right now. Because I'm working on the budget and two audits, one person.
And we appreciate you, you are much more knowledgeable than our, you know, previous, please don't take this personally. But, you know, I told you last time, I'm so thankful that I feel like we have a competent person who can answer our questions?
Thank you.
That we have. So I, I'm not meaning anything like that, it's just that, you know, we have been behind?
Oh, I, I understand.
A long period, and the frustration is there.
I can understand.
Frustration is there amongst our citizens.
I completely understand.
You seem to be the one that's getting the rap. And we don't mean it that way, it's just we have questions and understanding, you know? We gotta get caught up.
Yes.
So where we can be forty-five days. We should be able to be, to know something every forty-five, sixty days.
Sure.
That's the, you know, bare minimum.
Sure.
We never had a problem in the past, monthly, maybe the second week, second council meeting, you know, six weeks. We have the financials, you know?
And ne, and next council meeting, I'll be?
You're not the only one working in that, that, don't you have clerks in there, a financial clerk? She's the only one.
No, ma'am, you're very understaffed in the finance department. I'm doing the work of three people. And the only reason I can do that is 'cause I work from home. But if I were in the office as a regular finance director, we'd be behind again. Because the job is so intense that it takes three people to do this.
You're, you're thinking about utility billing, there are two utility billing clerks. That's all they can do to keep up with the amount of things that come in. So they get new accounts, they close out accounts, we have a new neighborhood that's coming on board. They issue meters for residential and commercial, and so they are, they are busy.
So let me tell you, for a small town, you got a lot going on. And when I was called to ask, you know, if I, I wanted to consult, you know, do some consulting services here, they told me about the two years behind on the audit. And I almost didn't do it, because that's a lot of work. However, your city administrator was savvy enough to know that she needed somebody who's skilled and who knows what they're doing, and you don't have to train that person, you just bring them right in and they get to work. 'Cause we needed to get caught up on those two audits, and I've done that. In two months, I did two audits, two years. And you will not be behind again. And if you read your audit, your last one, where the auditor wrote up that we're behind, you know, blah, blah, blah. What is the city going to do so that this doesn't happen again? You have to have it in writing, or else your rating agencies, grantors, if they're gonna see that, why are they behind? He asked me, are you gonna be here? Because you have to write something down for these people to read. And I said, I, I will be here as long as I'm needed. And I will train whoever they hire. As long as Rona wants me here, as long as you all want me here, I will dedicate my entire time just to the city of Wilmer. So that this doesn't happen again. And yes, in my past life, my financials, every single month, I would be presenting to council. Investment reports, budget amendments, I mean, everything was done on time. I've never been behind in my entire career. And so here, there is only one person. We have a person that is a senior accountant that does, I mean, the accounts payable, that takes a lot of time. Cutting all those checks, entering invoices, purchase orders, you know, the payroll and all of that. You need another person, another accountant, and we're working on that, you know? To handle certain items, certain tasks. And then the finance director handles some other tasks. So I have to come up with a list of tasks to go over with your city administrator and see, you know, let's put a plan together, so that we have a robust finance department. So that the department heads aren't operating blindly, like, how much money do we have, you know? No finance reports were given to them either. So they were like, okay, so do we have money? I mean, can you imagine running your household like that? You don't know how much money you have in the bank. And so now, they have that, they can just call me or email me and say, hey, can you run me a detailed report for my department? There you go. So you know how much money you have, or can I spend this on this or whatever? You don't have money in that line anymore. You have to do a line item transfer with me and tell me why and all that. So e, everything has to follow the process, you know? And so, I'm getting kind of going off the rails. But as I mentioned before, it is my pleasure to help you guys get to that point. It is my pleasure to do it the right way. Do it the legal way, do it the, not that it was illegal before, right? I make sure that it's on the record. Nothing illegal has been going on. But we wanna make sure that we're following all of the rules and regulations that generally accepted accounting principles, you know, it's called GAAP, GASB pronouncements. There's so many rules that the finance department has to follow. And wanna make sure that that's, that's there. And like I said, Rona, your city administrator, knows that that, that needed to be done. So like I said, you'll, you'll be getting your June report next time. I'm working on it right now. And the budget is a, is a big endeavor. Kudos to all of the department heads, putting all of this together. I mean, it takes weeks to compile all of that information. Can you imagine, line by line, how much you're gonna spend, what are you gonna need? You know, you need more people, you know? We're gonna cut back on people. And then with the constraints of the revenues that are coming in, and we don't know what, what's gonna be the certified values, you know, what would be the tax rate, you know, and so forth. Then you have to factor in your fund balance, are we gonna have enough? After, no, well, you gotta cut out some things. This goes, this goes, this goes, you know, sorry, you don't get that until you get to that point. So it's a very, it's a balancing act constantly. But yeah, they, they're, the department heads are very professional people. They, they either have conversations with their city administrator or with myself. You know, we wanna, we need to buy something, you know, blah, blah. Is that gonna be possible? Like, we have to save money now. If you don't need it, don't buy it until next year, you know, or whatever. She's very resourceful. She's very resourceful, and, oh, maybe we can get a grand, we can have somebody donate it, you know, so we don't have to pay for it. And so, it, it's a good, you have a good group. You have a good group of people working, they're very dedicated. Just a, a good group of folks that you have working here. And like I said, you know, we only have that one person in finance. And she's a hard worker as well. But there's, there's limits to how much one person can do there, and then the rest, I'm like, don't worry about it, you know? I'll do it. I'll, I'll, I'll put it all together. So it's, it's a, a big endeavor, and, but we're gonna get there. We're gonna make sure that everything's more transparent, hence posting things on the website so people can go, you know, and at their leisure, look at it. You don't have to print it out or anything, you can just, you know, look at it on your phone if you, if you want.
So this ending, back to the same thing, this amendment thing. This bottom line, fifty-seven million, four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, what, what page is that? What are you looking at?
Uh, page four, on this. Not in, not in that, in the, it's on the agenda.
Oh, page four, okay, can I see that? Because I, I couldn't find it.
It's what I've been trying to look at.
Okay. So. The two columns for the revenues are what I went over in my presentation. You have your fiscal year twenty twenty-five adopted. This is what you all adopted last year, right? The twenty-seven million. The amended is thirty-five million and change, a thirty-one percent increase. That includes all the funds. If you just look at the general fund, it's a twenty-five percent increase in revenue. That is your twenty twenty-four debt. Some increase in the property tax revenues, sales tax revenues, just to align with all of that. So that is a good thing, to have that twenty-five percent increase.
Okay. Keep going.
Oh. Um, and then I have it broken down for the other funds. Water and sewer fund, you know, EDC, CDC. Um, and I, I went over the, um, different slides, uh, a while ago. And then the one that says other funds, that includes the capital projects fund. And that's why you see that two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven percent increase. That is interest, okay? That is mostly interest for the capital projects fund that was not budgeted in the beginning. You have to put that in there because you're earning interest on that money that you have in the bank. So you have to show that.
Patricia, can you talk about in general fund, what that nineteen percent increase is?
Sure. So in the general fund, we start off with the sixteen million and then, uh, amended nineteen million. Your two fire trucks are in there. And another large...
So is this our total down here? This fifty-seven at the bottom line? Is what I'm asking?
Yes, the total expenditures for all funds, not general fund, all funds, is fifty-seven million amended. So if you, let me just calculate something real quick. Let me take out the, uh, capital projects.
Well, you're doing your calculations for me. If we take that twenty-seven point three million dollars out of total expenditures, that would give you, uh, about thirty million dollars in expenditures, where we budgeted twenty-six million. And so that four million dollars for our fire trucks, then it would all balance.
Yes. I think it's, it's, um, the capital projects fund that's throwing everybody off.
And, yeah, and it would might be nice to have a capital fund line. I don't know if you can do that under general fund or whatever.
Um, I lumped it into other funds because I was running out of room.
I understand that. It would be, we would understand it better.
Sure. It, it's noted.
It just goes down bottom line, uh, you know, expenditures increase, uh, amended fifty-seven million, four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So that's what I'm asking. Is that what you're wanting this, us to amend this to?
Yes. Yes.
And so council member Slaw, these are not, these are not financials. This is the budget. And so those are things...
The proposed budget you are working from now.
Yes. But they, it, it is things that were made, have not been accounted for or estimated. It's not what was spent. I think maybe I understand your question better. That this was not accounted for because either we didn't know or it came in, we estimated, we were more conservative in our estimates than what actually happened. So this, this is the budget, not the financials. We did not, let me say, we did not spend fifty-seven million dollars over what we told you. This is not a spend. This is the planning document.
Yes.
And it was not accounted for. So having someone who knows what is in, what is supposed to be in the budget, that is what she's placing in the budget so that by the time we get to the audit, we're not being questioned about why was this not budgeted. So that's where she is reconciling all of those things that should be in there based upon the two audits that she's completed so that we don't get deemed. This is just a budget. This is not us going over the budget. It was not accounted for, or based upon what she knows.
Why do you need an amendment if you haven't gone over your budget?
Because it wasn't accounted for.
You just count down on your spending to make it through the budget.
It wasn't accounted for.
It wasn't accounted for.
But it was spent, or you wouldn't need to amend it?
If I can understand, the buildings, the two new buildings were not put into the budget.
They were never.
And the fire truck.
That's right.
Was not put into the budget. It was just put in there previously as just savings. It was never put in as an expenditure.
That's right.
And we were not under construction.
And so that's what I mean by saying, uh, if you looked at here where it says twenty-five amended of fifty-seven, if you take away the twenty-seven million for the new buildings, that would be thirty million in expenditures. Take away the four million of our fire truck, we would be, fire truck, we would be at twenty-six million, which is what we adopted.
Yes, ma'am. And if you go back to general fund, to council member Neeland's point, there is a one million dollar difference between what we estimated and what was actually paid to Medline. Because we don't know what we get. Although our sales taxes are down, we still collected enough that we had to pay them based on that incentive agreement. So we were conservative in our estimates, but we actually had to pay another million dollars because of the sales taxes that were collected. Those are, we can never predict that. We can just go by what has been done in the past.
So our previous financial directors, consultants that we've had, were they not aware that we had to account for that expenditure of the, we know we had these new police department and the new public works building, but they were not put into the budget at all?
It, it was on her list without getting into personnel.
Okay.
It was one of many things that's...
It just didn't get done. But if we do take away the building and the fire truck, we match up what we said we would spend.
Yes, this is just to align it all.
Well, then, we would be two, uh, two million, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars short. Or over, rather, in our favor and the district's favor, or in the city's favor.
Right.
It would be twenty-six point three.
And it is confusing when you look at it that way.
All of that, when you said we'd take out, just use that other fund line as...
I don't like that other funds.
Pardon?
I don't like other funds. That's just too much to put in there.
Either, but I was understanding that that's where the fire trucks and the buildings are accounted for. So if you deduct that line, we're still three point five...
She's going line by line on the increases. So that's, that's why I was saying, we have to go in and show, that's why I was saying, if you could say what those, the difference, what the nineteen percent increase is, what, what the ten percent increase is in water and sewer, the sixteen and fifteen percent increase in EDC and CDC, like what was not accounted for. I can almost guess if it's the, if Medline was off in the general fund and then the incentives are paid out of general fund based on that agreement, and EDC and CDC. So then that would account, but I'm gonna go back and confirm that. That would account for the difference, um, the variance in those three funds. And then the debt fund, again, that's something we can't predict. We can give as much as we can based upon previous trends. So back to your point, I want to get you exactly what those are that, that were underestimated in the original budget, aside from the capital not being accounted for. And then with the PP, the long-term lease agreement for the, one of the fire trucks. So the, it's all of those things that, that's what a budget amendment is for. It's not to go over the budget. It's to bring into account what those things are that she's trying to follow with GAAP and GASB. So it, it wasn't spent. I, I, I'll repeat that. I ca- I can stand firm that, that we're not just frivolously spending taxpayer dollars. These are things that were not accounted for.
You have a question about what?
No, she's, she'll say that.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, I know it's, it's a lot to take in. And this is why I provided the line item document with all of the increases. And there's a column that shows you the increase or the decrease so that you can follow along and see, um, where that variance is. And it's broken down by fund and by line item. And then the presentation that I gave you, um, just gives you the highlights of each one of those funds so that you know what makes up that percentage increase. And you will find that in the yellow block, um, at the end of each, um, fund. And again, these are just end of year projections. This is what we're doing to align. We don't have to amend it. We can leave it like it is.
Then you get them doing all.
And then when the auditors come in, they'll start going through all of these in every single fund and say, if you got more in taxes, how come you didn't amend it? If you spent money for those two trucks, why didn't you do a budget amendment? If you got money in for the debt, why didn't you do a budget amendment? What happened? For every single fund, then we have to come up with an answer to them. Everything has to align at the end of the year, so you have those projections. And then we use that budget amendment document to plan for next year. So I take that estimated fund balance, and then I plug it in as a beginning fund balance for next year. And I start all my calculations again so that we can kind of know where we're gonna be, um, for next year with the fund balance. It's a concern. Okay?
Well, I was questioning you, um, earlier on, uh, you know, about personnel in the finance department.
Yes.
Just looking at this, um, finance department, accounting technician, this is what, senior accountant, director of finances, accountant, finance manager. So it's like you've got, uh, it's on page twenty...
And can you see on the fiscal year twenty-five amended green column how it's zero? Accounting techno- technician, zero. Senior accountant, she's there. The car allowance and the director of finance, that's what we already paid for the director of finance that was there. She's no longer there. That's to align with that, because you see how, um, a hundred and thirty-four thousand was budgeted for her? We're not paying that anymore because she's gone. So we have to do seventy-two thousand dollars. You go to accountant, there's nothing there. That's for next year. Finance manager, never hired. Savings. Payroll taxes, a lot lower than the forty thousand dollars, um, that were budgeted because we don't have the personnel. Their retirement, life and health insurance, lower.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I, but that's just what I was looking at, that string of people, the titles that was on there.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we don't know if they're there, you know, or not. Do you let us know?
So the accounting, the accounting tech, we never filled that position. And so the, the senior accountant, we do have.
Yes.
The director of finance will be less because we no longer have one.
Yeah, she's gone.
Have you as a consultant.
Mm-hmm.
And so you're down under contractual services.
That is correct. And that's not only me under contractual services, by the way. There are several contracts that the finance department pays for, okay? It's not just my contract. And just to clarify, my contract is less than you would pay a finance director with all the benefits and fringes, okay? Break it down by hour, I'm paid less than what you would have, because you have to provide health insurance to your finance director, a car allowance, you have to pay taxes, you have to pay retirement, all of those things.
So in your department, we had four hundred and ninety-nine, five fifty. So you might as well say five hundred thousand. And we're only going to spend as amended, two hundred and five thousand. So it's less than half of this.
Yes. Personnel and benefits.
Expenditure would be less than half of what it was budgeted.
That's right. And if you look at the bottom line for finance, you'll see six hundred and fourteen was budgeted. And we're estimating about five hundred and forty-one thousand. So there's a savings there of seventy-three thousand dollars. So that's another thing that the amendment does. I have to calculate who's gone. And we have to reduce all of that. So that, again, at the end of the year, the auditors don't come in and go, finance department, six forty-one, wait, but you only paid five hundred. Why didn't you amend the budget if you knew that they were gone? You're, you're, it's not, you know, aligning correctly.
I have a, I have one more question. Going through all of these bundles of financials, I started coming across, um, state comptroller, state fees on citation. But I had never had seen that in the list before, the state comptroller. And, um, like paying a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. And it, it's like, but having to pay them quarterly. Um, it, the total of it in, um, the first one I've gotten down was, uh, July twenty-four, and then October the twenty-fifth, twenty-four, and then January twenty-fourth, twenty-five, then April. So that was quarterly. Came to a total of five hundred and six thousand and ninety-three dollars, state fees. Was that, was a neglect that, that, that wasn't paid? And then they, they came in after their money or what? I've never seen it on finances before.
Yeah, what, what happens is that, um, are you talking about the court? I, I believe it's the court costs. So, so what happens is that when, um, they issue a ticket, there, uh, it's all broken down into so many different, yes, so many things that... And a lot of the revenue that comes into the city from the tickets goes to the state. We don't keep it. So we, we collect that money, right, at the court? And then, you know, put it in the bank and all that. And it automatically goes into a liability account. So that when the court fills out that quarterly report, they have to report on all the tickets that were issued. How much is this? How much is that? Seatbelt, you know, all of that. And it breaks it down, the state does. This is how much the city keeps, and this is how much you guys owe us. So we have it already in the bank, and then check request comes in and we have to pay them their portion. That was never ours. And that varies because it depends on the citations, right? You give out a little citations.
The spreadsheet I, that, uh, finance department should have, it shows every ticket, the fine, every fee state gets.
Yes.
The total at the end.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there is nothing that goes through there that doesn't have fines and, I mean, has fees attached to it. But I'm just, I never had seen this before. So it's just something, that's what I'm asking, that this was overlooked and it...
Oh, no.
And all of a sudden then they come out. I've never seen it before.
Your court administrator is amazing, by the way. She keeps track of every cent. She's fantastic.
She was, she was trained with her, I trained her.
Even the auditor said that, that we don't even worry about court, because it's fantastic.
We have budgeted for an accounting tech plus the finance manager. You're taking, you might as well say the financial, finance managers. Is it a personal issue where you can't find these people?
It's a labor issue. So we, we've had multiple temps. Um, with the previous director wanted to do temps to try to work, um, to see how the folks worked and see how trainable they are. And so we went through Robert Hatt, the accounting services. And, um, um, they, um, there, it wasn't the talent pool that we thought it was. Um, and it, it really, that's how we got to the point where we went to another, um, agency that had more experienced financial professionals to be able to get, um, the kind of work that you're getting now.
So as Ms. Slaw said, we've had it in the budget.
Yes.
But you will see... But the positions have just never been filled.
It's never been filled, and so.
So we're carrying it, we're still carrying it.
We're carrying it in this budget. You will see in the proposed budget that we have narrowed those down and placed what, you know, when she said she was thinking of a plan, she actually has the plan already. And saying this year, we can afford to maybe do one person, get that person onboarded to do these things. We have the TIF fund coming on, the capital, other capital projects, grants. We hadn't even really touched the surface on grants, and we probably have about four or five grants that would require additional staff expertise. And so what you will see in this proposed budget is kind of what is realistic. That is bringing it in a little more, and you will know what positions, just based on what we know, has not been fillable or filled on a consistent basis, then we are pulling those in.
I know we're, we're just extending this over and over and over, but I don't know how the other council members feel, but I would prefer to have an actual employee other than nothing, you know. I appreciate you, please. You're so knowledgeable. From what we've had in the past, you're very knowledgeable. And you can answer our questions. But I mean, having an employee, I think is, would be a lot better suited. So how do you go recruiting? What's the recruiting process about these people?
We have an amazing HR manager who has been going out to job fairs, that has been very creative. I think you heard from Chief Kemp, and Chief Kemp heard some of the creative ways that, that she's impacted, how we recruit, because it's tough for all departments. And so she's worked for some different cities in which she, she is very creative about how she recruits. We go through, everybody goes through TML, depending on, like, if it's an accounting position, we go through GFOA.
Yes.
You know, we try to reach out to those agencies for the professional organizations to try to get people and go through the temp agencies.
In, in today's world, how, how many cities are actually doing signing bonuses if, you know, they come on? Is that something that we may need to look into as being a?
That is something that this governing body has the ability to do.
Because that seems to be the, the new thing when you go out to recruit at a university or someone coming out with the, with the.
You don't want somebody brand new being your finance director.
No, I'm not saying that, but accounting tech, which would be somewhat of a learning position.
Yes, yes. And it's, it's very difficult. I mean, me as being a manager in the past, trying to fill these positions for, you know, my department, it was very difficult. I could not find people who were experienced in government, qualified, and that knew all the nuances that go with, with working in a, in a city government finance. And I'm not even gonna talk about finding a finance director because.
Are these positions at will or do they have a contract? They're at will.
Okay. I just have one more comment on the budget itself. You've mentioned several times about when the auditors come in and they're gonna say, you know, you're not in line with your budget. Why didn't you amend it? Okay, they know already that you have the opportunity to amend it. To me, the auditors, that would possibly be an item in their opinion. But to me, the auditors are going to be auditing the expenses that you've actually approved and purchased orders and spent. And whether or not you amend the budget has nothing to do with what you actually spent. And if they want to use that as an opinion item, that's fine. But they know you have the ability to go back and amend it and make it look like you did it right the first time. So I'm wanting to do it right the first time and not fix it because we didn't.
And what happens when you want to issue debt after you already passed the budget?
Excuse me?
What happens when you decide to issue debt to fix something like a water line or a sewer line, and you have to go out.
Streets.
Streets, and you already passed the budget, then you didn't do it right. Because now you have to amend the budget because you just passed a debt issuance. And you have to amend it to show the debt was incurred.
There's always emergency situations, and that's not what I'm referring to.
Okay.
Just like when the water line broke across the creek, I mean, the river. There's always emergency situations that we can't predict, and God help us that we could. But that's not what I'm referring to, and I think you understand what I'm saying.
Well, and like I said, you don't have, you don't have to amend it. You don't have to amend the budget. I did all of this work for you guys to see it, and you don't have to, so.
We would like you to.
I still, I see what you're saying. If we amend the budget, then we'll be right on with our expenses. But we're, the expenses are where they are, whether we amend it or not. I'm just advocating to be more on target from the beginning. And I'm outside of emergencies. You never can predict emergencies.
Yes, ma'am. We hear you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Do you want me to stay for the financials or?
Right, right now, we need to, this is number four. We need to, before we move on.
Right.
Okay. Counsel, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance zero-two-oh-two-five-zero-eight-oh-seven-A relating to the amendment for the budget ending September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five.
May I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. I need a vote.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
It fails. The vote was two to three. Before we get started on anything else, let's take a ten minute break, please.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, at the last council meeting, Mayor Pro Tem's law requested additional time to review the financials. We have placed at the dais the two presentations that, that Patricia went over. And so we are available to answer any questions that you have on the April financials.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have, I, I have another question on, on, on this. On, you're on the, the May count, um.
April.
April.
April?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think the April pretty much answered my questions on the state comptroller. Never had seen it before. So maybe it'll go away now. Maybe it's caught up and paid. Okay, on. You catch stuff that looks strange, so that's why I ask questions. A check made out to Lennar Holmes. Four hundred and thirty-three thousand, ninety-two dollars.
Yes, ma'am. So at the last council meeting, there was a request about that. What it is, when they were trying to get their final inspection, they were not ready to go on phase two, but they had some deadlines to meet. Within our subdivision ordinance, it allows us to collect what's called an escrow, which is for the amount of landscaping that they had to put in. Some of the fencing, the parkway that goes into the neighborhood. And so we collected that and allowed them to file their plat for the first phase while they continued to finish up some of the development, the stuff that was developer-related, not necessarily builder-related. So they turned those lots over to the builder, the developer did. And the developer paid that money. They have since, if you notice, put in the sidewalks, put in the signage, put in the landscaping, fully decorated the parkway, and we returned that money to them. Had they not done it, the city would have kept the money. But we placed it in an escrow account while they were getting it done.
So they gave you the money first, to hold for then?
They did.
And then you turn around when they finished the little houses?
When they finished it, then we returned their money to them.
So you wrote them a check for that?
Yes, ma'am.
So. That doesn't.
It's in the subdivision regulations that would allow the city to do it. And so especially when you're building homes, there's a developer who does all the streets and puts in all the amenities. If you recall, the PD allowed for a park, and there's a walking trail at the back with a pergola and all kind of nice amenities. Since the first single-family development that we had here in town, new single-family development. And so we were.
So you're just holding it like a bank account for, you know, when he gets through with the building?
It's an escrow, so it allows, in, in the subdivision ordinance that the council passed many years ago, it allows the city to collect the money and hold it until they fulfill their requirements.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And if they do not, that means we get to keep the money?
We would keep the money.
Yes, ma'am.
But in this case, you know, that, that's a lot of money, so if they're obligated, they, they wanna get it done so they can get that.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's about all I have.
Any other questions?
Just one more. When I'm going through marches, you know, I have all of these different months that I'm going through. And it, it's not a big check, but it just caught my eye. March the fifth. Five thousand dollar check made to Carl Jordan. No, that's, see, we don't have a line. I, I mean, it doesn't show, sometimes you can have that, what, where you can go see what fund is coming out of, you know, whatever. But this is, it was just, just the check, check number for that amount, so.
Yes, ma'am. So he's a consultant that's working on legislative items for the city. It's paid out of EDC and CDC. And he's working on a grocery store for the city as well.
Oh, oh, he's on our research team, so, okay. All right, got you. Yeah, okay. So I guess, I guess he, was that in Vegas or?
No.
It wasn't that, that one? Okay, all right. Okay, that's all I have on that.
It's in Austin, at, you know, where he used to work and can advocate on behalf of this area.
I, I can't hear you.
That's in Austin, where he helps us as well as.
Oh, in Austin?
Yes.
Okay.
He has contacts down there.
Oh. Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions? If not.
We can approve them, because.
May I get a motion?
Okay, are we on April or May? I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Five to two, five to zero. It passes.
Item six, discuss and consider the approval of May two thousand and twenty-five monthly financials.
Okay, we've, we've almost covered all this.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
So.
I make a motion. Don't have any more questions.
Does anyone have questions? If not, may I get a motion?
I made a motion. Go ahead and approve it.
We need a second. I'll second it.
May I get a vote?
Yes.
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 It passes, five to zero.
Item seven, receive a presentation regarding fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget.
And we went through this, so.
No. No.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay. That's right.
So we're not approving it, we're just previewing it?
Excuse me.
Okay.
Thank you. I think we pretty well went over this, ma'am.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Can you hear me? So what you have before you is a budget presentation, understanding that there is quite a bit of information to go through. So I will go through the budget presentation. In front of you also is the proposed budget. This was posted on the website on July twenty-first, when I gave this, I presented the budget to the mayor, and the mayor provided it to Kristen. She certified it and placed it on the website. Texas state law says that it has to be posted at least thirty days prior to any action being taken. So you have the certified copy. It is available on the website for residents in the community to review. So it is on the website as well under finance. And so as has been customary in previous years, we walked through the budget structure and process. As part of this process, I believe Patricia kind of touched on it, how are we doing this year? Which is what you all got as part of the budget amendment. And year-end projections, projected cost to continue existing levels of service, if there are any federal and/or state mandates. And then in this year's budget, which we have not done in the past, we will be bringing forth updates to the financial policy to meet what our lawmakers may or may not have changed, investment policy, debt policy, and then talk through the budget adoption process. On the third page, which is under priorities overview, on June twenty-first, several members of council met for a strategic roundtable, received a presentation, and walked through some projects that were of interest for this upcoming year. And of those, what we gleaned from the discussion, and I did not hear back from anyone on the strategic goals that were sent out in a memo. So we moved forward with infrastructure improvements, parks improvements, retail recruitment, safe neighborhoods, community appearance, and planning and development updates. So on the next page is the property tax valuation. This year for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, we, again, for the fourth year, hit the billion-dollar mark. We are at three point one billion dollars in certified property values. We are thirty-three percent higher than last year's numbers. We are the highest in Dallas County by far, with the next city being about ten percent over their last year's numbers. So you have that in a chart as well as a table. Next one is property tax collection. This goes through the last five years of what the tax rate has been. This goes through the last five years of what the tax rate has been. So for fiscal year 2022, it was at 56 cents. Fiscal year 23, 49 cents. Fiscal year 24, 43 cents. Fiscal year 25, 43 cents. Fiscal year 26, we are proposing 46 cents. And that is shown with the tax rates for the last five years. Next page is city at a glance. For fiscal year 25, I apologize for that typo, that should be 25. Our COG estimated numbers are 7,296. We are still at 12.615 square miles in corporate limits. The budget for general fund that we are proposing is 16.9 million. The proposed tax rate is .467928. Our average market home value is 228,515. Our average taxable home value is 178,299. Based upon a house that's $100,000 in the Wilmer community, the monthly cost of services would be about $38.99 a month. A daily cost of services are $1.29. City services that are provided as a result of either $1.29 for an average home value of $100,000 would be 24-hour emergency communications, 24-hour police department response, 24-hour fire protection, 24-hour ambulance services, code compliance, animal control, street stormwater maintenance, parks and maintenance, litter pickup, senior meals and activities, library programming, and water wastewater maintenance. The value of services for taxes paid, many times we get calls from residents that say, you know, we feel like we pay a lot of money to the city. And so we like to show an illustration of what a dollar looks like. The good majority of that dollar goes to Dallas ISD. And then there's about another third that goes to Dallas County, Dallas College and Parkland. And then that little bitty piece at the end is about how much the city collects in taxes. And then our average taxable value is $178,299. So under budget information, which is the next slide, we talked through fund types, budget overview, accomplishments, major projects, key outcomes, budget highlights, and then the budget calendar on what the next steps are. So you've sort of previewed this already from the 25 budget amendment. But as part of the state requirements, the city of Wilmer annual budget, we have to show the combined budget summary for all funds. This shows the general fund, Wilmer Economic Development Corporation, Wilmer Community Development Corporation, capital projects, debt service funds. As Priscilla mentioned, we now have to account for the tax increment financing fund. Of course, court building security, court technology. With the new state requirements, there is now a combined fund. And so that will start as well, but we have to show this in the budget. Seizure fund and the water and sewer fund. For the total revenues, we're estimating $36,071,858. Total expenditures, $30,59482. And then there was just a lengthy discussion about the fund balance. These are real numbers that are from the previous audits that have been completed. So the fund balance for all funds would be $29,884,315. Next page is sales tax revenue comparison. So we're showing five years previously with sales taxes coming in a little over $6 million. Just as you recall, a portion of that goes into the general fund and then split between the EDC and CDC. Again, general fund revenue, $17,038,284. That consists of sales taxes, property taxes, franchise fees and fines, licenses and permits, fines and forfeitures, charges for current services, interest and other revenue, intergovernmental contributions and donations. General fund expenditures, we show a total budget of 16.9 million. Of that, that's general government, public safety, community development, community services, and non-departmental. Water and sewer fund, that is Dallas Water Utilities. They treat our wastewater. They are who we had under contract and everything beyond the south of Belt Line, it gets lifted up and back into Dallas wastewater treatment facility. When we had the sewer line break, the city made the decision to contract with Trinity River Authority. Trinity River Authority also did water testing for us. But a contract was signed with the wastewater treatment portion of it in FY 2223. We do, we are actively working with a developer who will be the first to tap into that new line and construct into the trunk line. The city of Lancaster is where we purchase water from. They purchase it from DWU, as Patricia mentioned already. All three of these entities pass on expenses to us, and the city of Wilmer absorbs those. We do have plans in this upcoming budget to do a study, a cost study, which will better outline what that looks like for the city moving forward. And they can provide projections to show that with the consistent increases from the other entities that either treat our wastewater or we buy water from, that it is not necessarily a sustainable model. Part of what we are doing and seeking funding on is to get a grant to directly tap into water services from DWU. Five years ago, when I got here, we were purchasing water from Hutchins. It was significantly higher. We negotiated that with the city of Lancaster. Lancaster charges us in the same manner that DWU charges us with a small administrative fee, whereas the city of Hutchins, it was significantly higher. So we've saved money there, but probably the ultimate goal is to get direct water from DWU. And then the costs are only passed from one entity versus two entities. So we are hard at work on that. And so the next page is the water and sewer fund. It shows projected income. As you'll recall, this is a planning document. We actually have three years of prior numbers that we conservatively estimate numbers on to be able to project for this upcoming budget. We are only showing an increase in income of 3%. If you see at the bottom, all the way to the far right. We will have to remove the amended budget portion of it since that did not pass. And so we would have to recalculate that. So this is based on the numbers that we thought would be the amended budget. The numbers at the bottom show the fund balance or reserve as a result of this proposed budget, which would be $703,137. And that's for both water and sewer, taking into account bringing on new customers for the water service portion of it, as well as bringing on TRA with our new customer in the ETJ.
What is the $130,000 transfer in at the bottom? It happened in '24, and it was supposed to have been amended tonight also, so what is that?
I'd have to get you that information.
I can answer that.
Can you answer it? Come on up.
It is, um, it's a transfer in to pay for, it's a transfer in to pay for debt that the water and sewer has. And we use that, it's just showing how it's coming in so we can pay the debt. What is that? I can't remember who the entity is.
TRA? Is it TRA? Dallas County.
Is that Trinity?
I don't think so.
Water line?
For the water, 16-inch water line?
Yes, yes, that's it.
That's the water line? I understand there's another one over there also that's damaged, that's in the process of being fixed? Is that true?
I know. You'd have to give me a little more information. So based upon what Patricia said, I can get more information. So the city of Wilmer entered an agreement with Dallas County. It was threefold to widen Pleasant Run, I'm sorry, fourfold. Put in a 16-inch water line, which is how we purchased water from Lancaster, put in a hike and bike trail, and then put in a storage, elevated storage tank and then a ground storage tank. So there is an agreement with Dallas County to repay that over the course of the next 20 years that would come out of water.
But why isn't it considered a budget out? Why isn't it a transfer in or out? I don't...
Because we, we...
It's like a debt?
It was, I believe, EDC was who the city utilized to pay for initially, and so...
That makes sense.
Next fund is special revenues, which is type A and type B funds. So the first one that I show, and again, these are estimates. This is a planning document. We are very conservative in our estimates, and it is only 3% over what we have observed to receive in the past. Sales taxes are volatile. It depends on customer behavior. And so we do our best to try to estimate what that will be. Under CDC, we kind of brought that number back down as well, and that one is estimated at a negative 23%. Again, it's based on customer behavior. If there is a downturn in the economy, we would have to come back before this governing body to amend the budget because we would not have collected what we would have estimated. As we mentioned earlier, tax increment finance fund, we have not had this in the past. It was created some 15 years ago. The first one was the Southport Industrial Park. And most of the money that's paid in that TIF fund goes directly back to that industrial park. And then we've since created four additional TIFs. We have had a developer to come in and request payment. And so Patricia is showing this as an item moving forward. And then we would have to bring back before you a request for a checking account to be able to do it. We can receive it in our investment accounts. And that's typically where we start so that our money is making money. But then when we have to pay it out, we do have to put in a checking account. Police seizure fund, again, we don't know unless there is something that happens that the police department can bring in those funds. And that fund is up to the chief police to determine if, you know, there will be an auction or whatever happens. We tend to pay out money for, I think it's the Dallas County entity, and then we can receive funds as a result of that. Yes, okay. Debt service, so here is payments that you can see, and she has a nice little key here that shows all of the debt. So it goes from A to G. And I'm going to work back from G because those would talk through the ones that are paid off. So in 2016, there were tax notes that were paid off. F, in 2015, there were tax anticipation notes that were paid off. E is in 2024, the PPFCO, which is the lease for one of the fire trucks. And it was paid out. D is the 2022 certificates of obligation, which is funding the current construction of the police and public works building. 20, C, which is 2021 tax notes, that was water debt for the, to help us with the repair on the sewer line that happened across the Trinity River. It should be of note that we did get an earmark from Congresswoman Crockett's office to assist us with the design on that. We're currently working with the EPA. It was not one of the grants that got removed. A lot of cities had their grants removed as a result of the new administration. Ours was not. B is 2020 geo-refunding funds. And those, that was the one I was talking about, Councilmember Jacobs, where we did some refunding. And the INS was still at a higher amount, so we had some excess debt over the past two years. And then A is the 2020 certificate of obligations. And so those are the payments that we pay out. And then you have a debt service key that looks back over the past five years. So I'd like to go through some of the accomplishments. It's not everything, but you know, just some things that we certainly can be proud of. Our mayor continues to pursue education through Texas Municipal League and is again certified, a certified municipal officer. We were able to recruit and hire one of the best in the business city secretaries. We've completed the renovation of Adams Street Park, and we're looking forward to doing a ribbon cutting. We received approval for the restroom installation from Dallas County at Cottonwood Creek Preserve. Purchased the abandoned charter school that's on Dallas Avenue through the EDC Corporation. Wilmer Fire Department, as you've heard all night, received a new fire truck and ladder truck. Wilmer Police Department, they are ongoing customer-centric efforts, leading to multiple commendations from visitors and citizens for notable actions that go above and beyond the call of duty, in spite of the large amount of area that our small force covers. Wilmer Police Department has continuing efforts in the community by offering National Night Out, Faith in Blue, as well as hosting the Veterans Day ceremony. They continue to train in multiple disciplines, along with the fire department, to provide exceptional service to residents and corporate customers. Wilmer Police Department continues to be awarded seizure funds that help enhance delivery of services. We also have increased social media presence. We've created a communication structure to advise residents on city activities and promotional work. Of note would be the July 4th Sparks event, where we partnered with Howell Communications to do targeted media. We were on several news stations, social media sites, influencer sites, radio sites. And I believe the crowd illustrated the efforts that were made there. Municipal courts continues to process unprecedented cases. To your point, Mayor Pro Tim Slaw, those numbers continue to increase. We continue to see increased traffic here at City Hall due to the number of folks that come to court. To the extent that we're going to use some of the court's security funds to maybe train a dedicated bailiff to work the court as we continue to grow. Again, the finance department completed the 2425 audit, 2325 audit. Um, again, the Finance Department completed the twenty-four, twenty-five audit, twenty-three, twenty-four audit. Um, we've updated the utility billing software. Um, it, there is the option to pay, uh, by web. We have a kiosk that is what we consider a twenty-four hour staff person for customers to be able to pay their bill. And yes, customers can still drop their bill off in the drop slot at City Hall. Um, the Finance Department enhanced procedures and structures to help with revenue collection. Um, EDC increased marketing presence at key recruitment events. And so, we've done quite a few local events. We are more involved in franchise, uh, activities as a result of trying to recruit independent grocery stores. Um, so when you think about the Starbucks, the McDonald's, the Wendy's and, uh, some of those other, uh, uh, fast food restaurants, a lot of those are associated with franchisees. And so, we try to match franchisees, uh, with interest in maybe potentially constructing here in Wilmer. Um, we were, uh, fortunate to receive the relocation of John Paul Mitchell Systems from Century City, California. Um, as far as I know, there, this would be the first Texas Enterprise Fund Award from the governor's office. Um, this new facility will have a salon. It will have, uh, research and development. They will sell, uh, products out of their site, which is additional sales tax dollars, which is what the council has indicated that they'd like to see more diversity in some of the manufacturing, not necessarily distribution and warehousing. And so, um, this would, uh, fall in line with that. Um, human resources, uh, Councilmember Jacobs, you asked about this last year, the budget, about the employee evaluation citywide, and that was implemented in January. And so, that is, uh, now in place so that should the council want to do merit raises as well or, or cost of living adjustments, we have a mechanism to measure that. Um, continuing to implement advanced metering infrastructure, we did receive the last portion of the grant. Um, that I, I'd love to take credit for that, but that was actually in motion prior to me arriving here from the Bureau of Land Reclamation. And we have finished that. We do have a few more, um, meters to put in that are part of that system. But that has enhanced our revenue collection. Um, under the previous, uh, meter system, it, it was in favor of the customer. The city was not collecting all that it could have collected on revenues because of our failing infrastructure. So, that was already in place. That was already something council was pursuing prior to Rona coming to the city of Wilmer. Um, we've made key hires to enhance the appearance of the city's median and roadways. And as I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Neelin, um, we are very close to receiving the final closeout. We do have two staff, um, that have, um, we are putting and creating a parks department. So, not just maintenance and operation that's being overseen by Public Works, but actually building a parks department that will help with quality of life and, um, being more available to pick up litter, um, help with median beautification, um, and to help with the maintenance of the areas that were awarded to us and constructed under the I-45 Green Ribbon Project. Um, I, IT began implementation of cloud integration for the police department and municipal court. And so, they are probably about ninety-five percent complete. What that means for the city is we don't have a big room with a whole bunch of servers in there, but that, um, those data centers are where, um, you can house a lot of your data. Um, specifically for the police department, when you have, um, camera, uh, footage, it takes up a lot of space. And so, that was a significant cost savings for us on the police department and Public Works Building. Of course, we continue to enhance, uh, special events, senior services and the library. Um, we are planning on having the city's signature event and it's accounted for in the budget for Pioneer Days, Fall Festival, Easter egg hunt, wipeout waste, which counts toward our stormwater requirements with the state, National Night Out and Faith in Blue, Christmas tree lighting, Earth Day Events, National Day of Prayer, and of course, the fourth, uh, this past fourth annual Sparks Firework Show. We are moving some of those event costs to CDC, which is where the quality of life budget is, um, to provide some relief for the general fund. So, um, we are showing that in the budget that you have, um, with those expenses in there. And then major projects, um, we still show that I-45 Green Ribbon is underway because it's not finished. Uh, Beltline Road median improvements, it won't be finished until October. They still have until October to provide maintenance and make sure that all of the landscaping has grown in. The council did start the process of the roadway water and wastewater impact fee study. Because of state law changes, we do have to revamp that and bring that back, um, to the council. Additionally, our lawmakers have changed the rules that the Planning and Zoning Commission can no longer, um, act as the capital improvements advisory committee. So, Kristin will have that to present to the council on August the eleventh to talk through that change that, uh, we were not aware of. And the makeup is a little different. It has to be sixty percent, um, uh, from the development community. So, uh, we'll bring that forward. You all heard the presentation on stormwater utility fee. Sunrise Road Expansion, that's a counting project that we continue to work with them on. That's for sunrise south of Beltline. Encore Lighting Project, they are waiting on us to be closed out with the Green Ribbon Project before they will come in and install the historical lights along, uh, Beltline. That is underway. Uh, that started out as a thirty thousand dollar charge to the franchise fee and it is now down to three thousand dollars. Again, that's a, that's a charge that we could not predict when you're putting in new streetlights. We, we don't know what those charges will be because it comes from the franchise utilities. However, we get a franchise fee from Encore. So, if you think about a dollar, we probably pay, um, them about a quarter. And we receive in franchise fees about seventy-five cents. So, when, um, as we continue to develop, just with the data centers that are coming in, those franchise fees will go up. And so, you all will see that. But again, we are making our best estimate and looking at previous trends to be able to make estimates for the budget. Um, CDBG Housing Replacement Program, that's managed by Dallas County, but our residents benefit from that. Um, CDBG Adam Street Water Line Project, that's complete. CDBG Third Street Water Line Project, that's underway. Um, they estimated six months. That will be the end of the approved projects that Wilmer has. So, in 2026, when there is another CDBG allocation, the council will be able to decide what the next five years will look like for those projects. So, those could be street projects. That could be a combination of street, water, sewer, which is what you all did with Pecan Street. But you had to wait until there was enough money in there. So, staff will do some, some, uh, review of that and will, um, bring that when the time comes for CDBG. Loop Nine Project is complete. Cottonwood Creek Preserve, that's stewardship by Dallas County, that's underway for the restroom installation. Um, they have also given us permission to put in a parking lot as well as a disc golf course. Um, the police station, Public Works underway, we're estimating about eighty-five percent complete. Other major projects, which is City Hall, Senior Center, Library and potential animal shelter, um, that is on hold based upon what we heard from councilmembers that, um, that a, uh, election should be, uh, done with that. There has been dollars spent on design. And so, that would put us a little ahead, um, but we will start that process over. Our lawmakers have changed when we can have elections. So, now elections are only in November. And so, we are, um, you know, looking at how we can edit that process. And then major developments, Lenar Phase One is underway. They do have a Phase Two Marketplace at Liberty Crossing. They're waiting on a splash pad, um, which is under construction. And, um, then of course, what passed tonight was the Master Plan mixed-use development, which they are doing the apartments first. Key outcomes, um, that we have, uh, checked on the list, um, a lot of unfunded stuff, which is the lead service line replacement. That's a federal mandate. We were not planning on that. Um, we have accounted for it in the budget. Uh, we are seeking, uh, grant dollars from Texas Water Development Board, um, as many cities are. And it's very competitive, um, but we are working on that. Again, the restroom installation, impact fees, utility studies. Um, Dallas County is doing the Inland Port Flood Study. And so, out of that study, we will get one project. We believe that project is going to be the creek behind Johnson Street because there's a lot of erosion. Um, and so, um, they believe that that is probably the highest priority for our community. Um, long-term capital improvement, which we've not accounted for in the budget previously, but we want to make sure that happens moving forward. Pavement management plan, so part of us estimating, and some councilmembers have heard the presentation, we have to rate the streets in the community and then, um, work on a street management plan to be able to help with operations and maintenance. Um, as I mentioned earlier, user fee study, utility fee, service fee analysis for future water. Twenty-twenty-two Bond Project Completion, which is police and public works. Full integration of cloud technology throughout the entire city. And then the compensation study implementation, the next phase. So, the best part, the highlights. What, what will you see in this budget that you'll get to have and read over on the weekend? Um, in administration, we are asking for a custodian and we're moving away from the contract, um, for janitorial services. So, um, we, we believe we can save some money there. The police department, there were four available positions that you all heard at the Strategic Roundtable. Um, because recruitment is tough these days, um, we, we have made the decision to freeze four of those positions. Um, and if, if we get a big influx of, uh, officers, Chief, uh, we will come back and ask the council to reconsider unfreezing, uh, those positions. But for right now, we're asking that those positions be frozen so they won't show up in the budget. Purchase of an enhanced ticket writing technology that actually comes out of the, uh, court funds. And so, that's the restricted funds that Patricia talked about. And that, that is an eligible expense. Um, in Public Works, we are freezing one position, um, to help in general fund. Um, but we are not freezing the positions that are helping with the litter. Those are where we put the two parks positions, that those will continue forward. So, um, we're going to look at, it's been difficult to keep someone in the position. So, if we're not, if we can see that we are not consistently filling it, those are the ones we're considering to freeze. So, there is one in Public Works. Um, human resources, uh, we are asking for a three percent market adjustment citywide. Um, we believe that the budget can handle that. Um, that is very different from the past, um, but we believe in order to remain competitive and to be able to recruit, that, um, three percent would be in line and the budget could handle it. And then, of course, significant recruitment efforts for less contractual staff. Health insurance, um, initially, we were told that it would go up twenty-six percent. Dean, who will be here on August the eleventh to give an insurance presentation, um, was able to get a re-rate at a fourteen cent, uh, fourteen percent, uh, increase. And there will be no change to benefit level. So, he will go into more detail about that. As I mentioned, in Municipal Court, the bailiff placement, um, to support increased traffic in court, that again is paid from the restricted funds, the security funds. And so, any training or payment for an officer that may not be on shift can, um, come to court and they would be paid out of that fund. And that would be a transfer that would be seen in, in the financials. The Fire Department has a fire inspector. We've mentioned that, uh, when Chief, uh, Gifford gave the presentation. Right now, we have an interlocal agreement with Dallas County. Dallas County does, um, plans reviews. So, as our staff gets more attuned to development and starts the inspections on some of the businesses, which will bring in additional revenues, we will try to transition that contract out. But right now, um, the, the city, from general fund standpoint, could not afford it. As Patricia mentioned, you know, that's a six-figure position. We would be paying benefits. And right now, we pay Dallas County a hundred dollars per project. So, it's a, a very good partnership. Finance, um, they are in the process of doing an integration for the financial software. So, just as, um, Patricia mentioned, you know, she is doing a lot of stuff manually now with this new software that we will be implementing. Um, it will feed directly into the website so they don't have to scan the financials and the check registers and all the things that you see on the website now. It'll automatically go on there. The department heads can go into the budget themselves and look and see where they are and, uh, be able to better manage their budgets. Emergency management, um, so Chief Gifford has, uh, been working to try to get elected official training stood up so that, that will be y'all. Um, in order for us to receive grants, um, we would need to have all of the elected officials trained. If there was an emergency in the community, you all would need to know how to declare an emergency locally and then how we would work with our, um, state regional and, uh, county partners. So, that is on the horizon. That's on the list. We'll be reaching out to you all for that. And then again, the parks maintenance staff. Um, on August the eleventh, Kristin will be bringing forward Keep Wilmer Beautiful. We are proposing that the Parks Board would serve as the Keep Wilmer Beautiful Board. There are options to be able to get grants, to get that welcome sign that, um, we've discussed and for CDC to pay for some of that. Um, Kristin and her team researched with Tech Dot and they found a way that we can sponsor a portion of the highway because they do not want staff or anyone to go out there picking up litter. So, monthly, there will be a sign, did I bring it? Did I bring it? Yes. Want to pass that around? Is this the one y'all did?
Yeah.
Yep. So, um, we'll have a sign out where it will be sponsored by the city of Wilmer. They will come out once a month. It's Tech Dot and, um, they will pick up litter. So, thank you, Kristin and, and Angie.
I, I just want to say, I'll tell y'all more on Monday, but it's monthly cleanups instead of quarterly. And they will provide us with the, uh, report that tells how much litter is being dumped and picked up on the highway.
This is an example if you wanted to pass that as well.
Is it just on I-45 drainage?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then sanitation rates, we have an ongoing contract with Waste Management. There is a CPI adjustment that's baked into that. But we also collect franchise fees on the commercial properties. It does not come from residents. And that money goes into a sanitation fund that will help us to fix streets within our existing neighborhoods. We were very conservative on those estimates. Those numbers appear to be rising as we continue to get additional commercial customers that come into town. And so, as our commercial base continues to grow, then that fund will grow, which will help, um, with street repair within the city. And that's it. Last page is budget calendar. So, tonight, the budget workshop, we have two items that are before you, which is the designation of an officer. That's the tax collector assessor that does our... That's the tax collector assessor that does our truth in taxation annually, and then, the setting of the tax rate. On Monday, August the 11th, we'll have the board and commission appointment. If you all over the weekend have studied this and have more questions, we have made that available for additional time to discuss questions in a budget workshop format. And then, we will have the insurance presentation from Dean Casey. Monday, August the 18th, we have reserved that as another budget workshop, that it is just a work session, and that is all we talk about, is interaction between staff and council. And if there are specific departments that you would like to hear from, we can arrange that as well. And then, Thursday, August the 21st, is the scheduled public hearing for tax rate adoption, budget adoption, and tax rate ratification. And if we don't get finished, we have a cushion in there, and Dallas County will allow us, they have a date that we have to meet that deadline in order to get the information to them for the upcoming fiscal year. And so, we have baked in the September 4th date. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. You all saw a lot of the proposed budget already, but I've given that to you all to have to study over the weekend. And then, we'll send out something tomorrow to see if there are specific questions, or we can just go over questions on Monday, the 11th. I believe Kristin has already posted that meeting. And so, we are ready to go.
Counsel, do you have any questions? If there's no questions, may I get a motion?
We don't need to.
There's no.
Okay, okay.
See, we haven't budgeted for repair of any roads like we talked about.
We do. We put some in. We still are waiting on the priority for the roadways, but we have some that we have on the list that we continue. So, potholes, we do anyway, but like, for level ups where it's a repair, that there's enough money in the sanitation fund or in the public works fund, whether it's the staff or we bring in a contractor, and we try to weigh that.
See, we talked about Johnson and Deverie, where they just need to be torn completely apart and redone.
Yes, but we want to get the priority, so we're fair in our assessment of.
Okay. Then, we'll move on to number eight.
Item eight, discuss and consider approving a resolution designating an officer or employee to calculate the new, the no new revenue tax rate, voter approval tax rate, de minimis rate in accordance with Section 26.04 of the Texas Tax Code for the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget and providing an effective date.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, the Texas Tax Code, Sections 26.04(c) and 2617(e) requires the governing body of a municipality to require an officer and employee designated by the governing body to calculate the no new revenue rate, voter approval tax rate, and de minimis rate for the taxing unit after the chief appraiser submits the appraisal role. The tax assessor and his staff are actively involved in the calculation of the tax formulas and providing these services to the cities. Therefore, we are requesting the city council designate the tax assessor to calculate the no new revenue, no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate and the de minimis tax rate for the city. Staff is recommending approval to designate John Ames, tax assessor collector, to do, to calculate the no new revenue tax rate, voter approval tax rate, and de minimis rate in accordance with Section 26.04 of the Tax Code.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Is this the one that has to be read specifically?
Not yet. If, and when we get to the actual action, we will put that in the recommendation. Right now, it's just a resolution designating them.
Madam Mayor, I make a recommendation that we designate the Dallas County Tax Assessor, John Ames, to calculate our tax rate as a de minimis tax according with Section 26.04 of the Texas Tax Code.
I'll second it.
Okay, may I get a vote, please?
Yes.
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 It is five to zero. It passes.
Item nine, discuss and consider approving a resolution on the proposed fiscal year 25-26 tax rate of 0.467928 per $100 assessed valuation. Receive related tax calculation documents. Tax record vote to consider a tax rate for the city of Wilmer, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, setting a public hearing requiring publication of the notice of the 2025 tax year proposed property tax in the newspaper and posting the notice on the city's website.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, the no new revenue tax rate is the tax rate for the tax year that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue for the city of Wilmer from the same properties in both the preceding tax year and the current tax year. The voter approval tax rate is the highest tax rate that the city of Wilmer may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The de minimis rate is the rate equal to the sum of the no new revenue maintenance and operations rate, the rate that will raise $500,000, and the current debt rate. The purpose of this item is to hold a record vote approving the proposed tax rate. As you will recall, in the past, this vote will set the ceiling on the tax rate. We are still looking at a budget and what we can do to kind of fill it in, but the voter approval tax rate is what we are proposing as the ceiling for this year's tax rate. That includes INS for a payment that we have to make, and that is included in that number as well as a decrease in the MNO, providing the voter approval rate at .467928. The Texas Property Tax and Local Government Code, SEC Section 140.010, requires taxing units to comply with truth in taxation laws and adopting their tax rate. A unit must publish notice of public hearing on tax increase and hold one public hearing before adopting a tax rate if the unit's proposed rate is higher than either the no new revenue tax rate or the voter approval tax rate, whichever is lower. The date, time, and place of the public hearing for the proposed property tax must be announced in the notice. If approved, the city secretary shall publish a notice of public hearing on tax increase in the city's official newspaper and on the city's website. The language in the notice is stipulated by the state of Texas and cannot be added to in order to provide context. This does not, this does apply to the city of Wilmer. I would like to make that correction because we've gotten information that if it's, we do have to have a public hearing. So, on this one, Councilmember Jacobs, this is the one in which your option has specific language when you make the motion. And so, the city council may set the tax rate by taking a record vote on the proposed maximum property tax rate and to place consideration to adopt the tax year 2026 proposed tax rate for Thursday, August the 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM at Wilmer Community Center 101, Davidson Plaza, Wilmer, Texas 75172, which will be published in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
May I get a motion? Or do you have any questions?
We really can't.
What is our tax rate now?
43 cents.
Point four three.
Forty, forty-three point seven or something like that. So, what was the de minimis tax rate recommendation?
De minimis is 474404.
Forty-seven, I'm sorry, 47?
Point 474404.
Okay, and the no new revenue?
No new revenue is 415673.
So, we're still staying lower than the?
So, as long as we're not above the de minimis tax, it doesn't have to go for?
If you're not above the voter approval.
What was the voter approval?
Voter approval is .467028.
And so, that's what we are recommending?
Yes, ma'am. That includes a payment, so there is a debt schedule in which there is a larger payment, which would, it increased our INS side. So, like Patricia had mentioned, there's an MNO rate and INS rate, and the INS is higher, that's the reason it's higher.
So, we're looking at, oh, is it 2.8, 2.8 increase per $100? I'm sorry? What was the amount of increase in, 2.8 or something like that?
For the.
What was the tax?
INS.
What is it this year?
So, for next year.
What is it current, it currently is 40?
So, for next year, we are going to have to pay 1.8 million dollars more. The 2021 tax note is coming due, and it's a huge payment. It's 1.8 million dollars. So, that's, you have to take that into account when you calculate your tax rate. That's why it's going to go up. You have to raise the tax rate so that you can make that payment.
Wow. It seemed like last year, I heard cities that were lowering their taxes, giving tax prices.
But we have always had low.
We did lower it last year.
We've always had the lowest in Dallas County.
Still, when I, I don't know why, but.
So, we're looking at a 3.5 cent increase?
Yes, because you have to pay that tax debt next year. It's a huge payment. I think the way that debt was structured, when you guys approved it, they gave you low payments in the beginning, and then, bam, it goes up. Kind of like a balloon payment, if you will. So, that affects it.
Is that just a one-year thing, your new perfect plan, or is it like that?
You have some other debt coming through, and it's in the audit. You'll be able to see all your debt service for the next few years, so you can kind of plan on that, but that's how it is.
But legally, that's the maximum we can go to without it going to the voters?
Right. And as you know, we have not had a increase in our taxes in many years.
Well, last year, we gave them a 2 cent decrease.
Right.
So, really, we're only going up one penny over a two-year period. But it's still, no one likes to pay extra taxes.
Okay, if there's no more questions, may I get a motion?
Well, we've got to have the hearing. So, are we?
The hearing is on August the 21st.
So, we really can't adopt this?
You have to, you do have to set the tax rate. You just set the tax rate. You're not adopting it. You have to set the ceiling.
Yes, discuss. I'm approving a resolution.
And so. Can't, can't make it more, but the council certainly can reduce it. But we'd have to figure out what on the INS side, because the money is on the INS side.
Okay.
Where's the sentence to read?
On page, that page, under recommendation or option.
Madam Mayor, I make a recommendation that we set a proposed maximum property tax rate to place consideration to adopt the rate of 2026 proposed tax rate of. Point four. Point, as it, .467928 per $100 assessed evaluation.
May I get a second?
You have to read the rest of it. Do you want me to read it?
Go ahead. I was just trying to put it all together because.
To adopt the tax year 2026 proposed tax rate for Thursday, August 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Wilmer Community Center 101, Davidson Plaza, Wilmer, Texas 75172, which will be published in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Now, may I get a second?
Yeah.
One second.
Thank you. Negative vote?
I thought this said, okay, we're going to have a public hearing on August 21st, but we're voting for it now, I mean, for this tax.
You got to set it.
Yes, we have.
You're voting on what the maximum tax rate will be. The vote tonight isn't setting it, but that's the most that it will possibly be.
Right. It can't go any higher.
Okay, I guess if it's, if it's got to be done, no, I just don't, I don't agree to that, so I don't agree with that.
Okay.
We can just wait for the, no, no, we can just wait for the public hearing.
We have to, we have to set it.
Yeah.
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
That's what I asked, to wait for the public hearing.
You're just setting, you're setting it. You're not voting on the tax rate. It is not the final decision, and then, you have to set the public hearing.
Right.
And then, at that, so we have two opportunities on the 11th and 18th.
And then, it's set for a public hearing after we vote.
Yeah, you're setting the public hearing tonight. You have to announce it, and then, direct the city secretary, and we have to put it in a paper, we have to put on a website, and then, announce the public hearing. The public weighs in. We're having discussions with you all between now and the adoption date, and if y'all don't like that maximum, then we have to go, we have to discuss.
Okay, I bet, yes, what we need on the third day.
Yes.
Get it over with.
Linda?
Yes.
And this is for?
It is a five to zero. It passes. Okay.
For a public hearing. Executive session, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Chapter D, the city council will now recess into executive session, closed meeting, to discuss the following. A pursuant to Section 551.074A1 of the Texas Government Code to deliver it, the appointment employment, appointment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to lit city administrator and city secretary.
It is 10:40, and we are going into executive session.
It is now 11:34, and we are convening our council meeting.
The city council will now reconvene into regular session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 551, Chapter, Subchapter D, Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code, to take any action necessary regarding A pursuant to Section 551.074A1 of the Texas Government Code to deliver its appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to lit city administrator and city secretary.
Ready to have the side?
Ready to have a say? Make a motion.
No, I'm...
I'm sorry.
Okay. I make a motion to terminate Ms. Greenfellow for cause as defined in her employment agreement effective immediately.
A second for motion.
Madam Mayor, I want to go on record that there is no cause. So in case this does go to a lawyer for legal, there is, the items that are listed, there's no cause.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, may I get a vote?
None.
Yes.
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 No.
It is three to zero, I mean, three to two, and it fails. Or it passes, that Ms. Ronan is no longer with us. And Ms. Ronan, I wish you all the luck. I'm behind you 100%.